Mayors members of the commission, my name is Carlos Marin, I'm with Ambiotech. And joining me today are Ann Whitco, staff hydrologist, and Dr. Jude Benavides, who's an associate senior engineer and also on the faculty with UT Brownsville. As Ben said, there will be two items later tonight. One of them will be to adopt this plan that was already been completed, funded by the Water Development Board. And the point of adopting this plan is that it'll make us eligible for FEMA funding. And I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. The other item is to expand the scope of this project to encompass a bigger area. This map, can you bring it to the second slide, please? Is that the second? Yeah. There. Excellent. This is an aerial showing the Brownsville ETJ in red around the outside area. The 브라운sville ETJ is on the left. All the red areas are Brownsville ETJ. The blue, the purple actually, the old study area, which is what this study that's been completed actually encompasses. The yellow area is the Brownsville city limits. And as you can see that the Phase 1 or our old study area, ah, thank you very much, only encompassed a small percentage of the entire ETJ and a small percentage of the actual city limits. And again, this is the entire ETJ. This is a report that I'm going to present today and the recommendations and the CIP associated with that plan. The Phase 2 of which you'll also be considering today is to expand this study area to the blue area. And as you know, this whole area is rapidly growing. The old study went to about south of Alton-Glor around the Brownsville Country Club. And I'll get into more details of what was covered there. But the second phase of this study is to encompass a larger area, which is one of the most rapidly growing areas in Brownsville. Next slide, please. The goal of the project was to first determine topographic data. Topographic data in the old days was very expensive to obtain. Now we're talking about LiDAR, laser, derived data. The next thing was to develop what are called hydrologic and hydraulic models. And the point of that is that you can simulate what's going to happen to the water sheds when you drop a given rainfall on the system. Then we evaluate alternatives in terms of using benefits and costs, develop the CIP, and then conduct the public hearings. Next slide, please. This is a representation of the LiDAR information, the topography in the study area. The project study included Town Rosaca, North Main Drain, Rosaca de la Guerra, and CCD number 1 or Cameron County Drainage District number 1. This by the line road, expressway, the river is somewhere out here. And basically, the darker the color, the higher the elevations. The lighter the colors, the lower the elevations. So you'll see a general pattern of drainage going from the higher elevations in the river, going from west to east. And you can also identify problem areas, Highway 48, 802, the airport area, and of course northeast Brownsville past Rosaca de la Guerra. Next slide, please. Problem with drainage in the area, everybody's familiar with it, flat topography. Yes, we're in drought. In fact, the entire state's in a drought right now. And we average only about 26 inches of rainfall per year. But the problem down here is we can get 10, 12 inches in a couple of hours. And we've seen that in Houston, I think yesterday, they're in a drought as well, and they got, I think, 8 inches in a very small timeframe.
They may not believe you today, but yeah.
That's right. Poorly drained soils. We all know what the growth and development, what that causes for the runoff to grow, to go past and peak a lot faster. One of the other problems I want to address, and we'll talk about this later on, is multiple jurisdictions. Even within the small area that we talked about, there are a number of different jurisdictions that govern drainage and make drainage policy. As a result, sometimes we're not always going in the same direction. Accountability and control are not always in the same place. As a result, sometimes things don't get done well. And the other issue, next slide, please, that I want to discuss is primary versus secondary flooding. Our project only focused on primary flooding. And that is when the major drain overflows. And as a result, the waters, houses that are not necessarily close to the drain but are tied in hydraulically will flood if they're in a lower elevation. And we see that a lot in Brownsville. That's a major source of flooding, flooding, and the more serious type of flooding. There's also secondary flooding where the connection from the neighborhood to the main drain is of insufficient capacity that even if the drainage itself, the drainage ditch itself is at low levels, not flooded, they'll be flooding because the water can't get to the drain. We're more concerned with this, and our study focused on this. This is a secondary problem. Fixing this problem before you fix this problem is like rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. It's fruitless. Next slide, please. This is a prediction using the hydrologic and hydraulic models of what the existing conditions, flooding, existing flooding conditions are in the area of the study. Again, this is Town Rosaca. This is North Main Drain, Rosaca de la Guerra, and the biggest watershed in the study area, Cameron County Drainage District number 1. The blue areas are indicative of flooding. The darker the color, the more serious the flooding. And immediately what stands out is Four Corners area, South Most area, airport, and the biggest problem here, Brownsville Country Club in this area. And the biggest problem is Highway 48, 802. That's a very serious and very low spot. Next slide. This is a prediction of what happens when you have full development in that area and with runoff controls. And I point that out because particularly CCD number 1 has done a great job of maintaining their ditches and implementing runoff controls on new development. The point is that even with runoff controls, we're still going to see a significant amount of flooding, and that flooding's going to be worse as we move forward into the future and development increases. CCD number 1, flood depths about 6 feet, 24% increase in flooded areas. Rosaca de la Guerra, 13% increase in flooded areas. North Main Drain, 25%, et cetera. Next slide. The proposed recommendations involve both nonstructural and structural controls. The nonstructural controls are to revamp the jurisdictional organizations that govern drainage in the area. Instead of having a loose network of sometimes competing jurisdictions, we're proposing a single drainage entity. And that will focus control and responsibility and accountability in a single point. The next one is to implement development controls. CCD number 1 has already started that. The city has ordinances that allow it to at least look into it. So it basically runoff from the site must be less than or equal what you see without development. And secondly, you need to consider downstream impacts. Typically, when we look at drainage, we're only concerned about how fast we get the water off and are the pipes big enough. But that's self-defeating because somewhere down the road, you're going to have to control that water. And once the water gets into the drainage ditch, it's very expensive to control. Property buyouts, there are some areas that are not worth trying to implement structural or nonstructural controls. They're not going to fix them, and it's too expensive, and we'll just buy those out. And of course, structural controls. And the main focus here is on detention ponds. And I want to stress that detention ponds can be multiple benefit ponds. They can serve as parks, recreational areas at the same time. Channel modifications and the typical type of hydrologic improvements. Next slide. This is a schematic showing the proposed plan for CCD number 1. And basically, it involves a number of detention areas. And they range from 50 acres to 100 acres. Total storage area would be about 4,200 acre-feet plus hydraulic ditch improvements. Next slide. Proposed plan for North Main Drain, again, the same thing, detention ponds, and increase in detention area near the airport. Next one. Town Rosaca, dredging of Rosaca, some property buyouts, and some lining of ditches. Next slide. This is the result of implementing the plan for CCD number 1. This is for a 100-year event, and you can see that the dark areas have become much lighter. We removed approximately 4,800 structures from the floodplain. The net present value of total costs, which are capital and operation and maintenance over a 20-year horizon, about $34 million. The benefits which are derived as a result of reduced flood benefits are, you know, over $500 million. Net benefits, $600 million. Reduction in floodplain areas about 50%, and so on. Next slide. Implementing the North Main Drain, again, we removed approximately 1,000 homes from the floodplain. Net benefits is $60 million. Next slide. Town Rosaca, again, net benefits are approximately $100 million in reduced benefits. Next slide. How much does this cost? Well, what we've done is try to stretch out the capital and O&amp;M costs. In this case, it's just the capital costs over 20 years. And it breaks down to about, an average of about $7 million a year over the next 20 years. The majority of the expenses would be in CCD number 1, it's the largest drainage district. Town Rosaca, about $10 million. North Main Drain, about $33 million. But again, it averages to about $7 million over the next 20 years, which is compatible, comparable to the amount of improvements we're talking about for our street improvements. Next slide. How do we finance an infrastructure? Well, there are a number of alternative ways to finance that infrastructure. Impact fees, certificates of obligation, bonds, terces. There's ways to share some of the money that's been already allocated for streets, do it for drainage. But of course, there are competing priorities. We've got a very small pot of money. Where should it go? And are we better off spending money on drainage versus downtown redevelopment? Drainage versus parks? In some cases, we could combine the functions of drainage and parks. But the question ultimately is are we better off from an economic development point of view and fairness? And really, those questions really need to be addressed within the comprehensive master plan we've been talking about implementing. Next slide. Next slide. In the case of drainage, however, as opposed to streets where funding is fairly limited and getting even more limited for larger projects, is that FEMA has now changed their policy recently. In the past, FEMA would only fund buyouts. Now FEMA is going to make money available for actual construction if you have a master plan or a drainage plan, and if you're eligible. And the project grants are being administered through the Water Development Board. In our last public hearing, we spoke to the Water Development Board, and they're very interested in funding projects down here. And if we adopt this plan today for Phase 1, some of these projects will be eligible for funding with a 75%, 25% match. And that's fairly recent. Most of the money right now is going to East Texas, and they'd like to see some of that money down here. To be approved, we must adopt the plan by the city and then approve it by FEMA. And there'll be an application that needs to be prepared, but our discussions are, they will be ranked highly. Next slide, please. Now, in the short run, we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking about potentially waiting for master plan or some other vehicle for determining what is the appropriate way to finance that infrastructure. And these are the same questions we'll be looking at in terms of financing water and wastewater improvements, streets, and other improvements. We're really facing, because of our growth, a tremendous challenge in terms of financing our infrastructure. And that question needs to be addressed in a very thorough and organized way. In the meantime, what do we do? Well, I think the most important thing we need to do is implement jurisdictional organizational restructuring. Literally, we're in a hole. And the first law being finding yourself after you dug yourself into a hole is you stop digging. And one of the things I would recommend immediately is to step up our enforcement and implementation of ordinances in terms of the plating process. So that plating now has to incorporate what downstream impacts will be. And of course, creating a single organizational agency. Next phase, which is the second item you'll be looking at, is to expand the models and the scope of the project to include the areas that are growing, and then implement Phase 1 of the Years 1 and 2 CIP. Next slide. Here's Years 1 and 2, drainage reports. Again, the plating for review so that the downstream impacts are considered, organizational restructuring. I think in terms of organizational restructuring, there are several options. Start from scratch or take CCD number 1 and simply expand its scope. And talking to Jim Goza, that will require an election in May, but that's something we have some time to start working on. The next one will be the plan, design, and construct detention pond near Owens Road, Four Corners, about $2 million. Our conversations with Water Development Board indicate that this project would be eligible for the funding under FEMA if this plan is adopted today. Plan and design construct Brownsville Country Club detention pond. This could be done in conjunction with the Morrison Road improvements. Drainage is going to be a big part of that. And I know the city is currently talking about deepening the ponds at the Brownsville Country Club and considering that together with the Morrison Road drainage, we'll be able to come up with some money to do that. And of course, Town North, which is one of the worst areas on Route 10, 802, that project is already underway. Next slide. That's basically my presentation. If you have any questions, appreciate it. Thank you.
No questions?
Any questions?
Fine. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm sorry for being late. I was just trying to, Dr. Marin.
Yes, sir.
This is just an observation, but what is the state's, is the state willing to help in any way? And what, the reason I'm telling you this is because as a citizen of Brownsville, we never flooded on Old PI and Boca Chica. We didn't flood that much in the Minnesota area, 802, out by the old hospital. When the state fixed our roads and went down about a foot and a half and reconstructed our roads, we started flooding. We started seeing people with water in their houses, things that did not happen before they went down instead of up on the roads. Is there anything that the state can do to help us within this as part of your plan?
Well, it's not a unique situation when TechDOT designs a road that it sometimes causes some secondary drainage problems. I mean, the area you're talking about is susceptible to flooding, as you saw in my drawing. But there is no question that that has contributed to drainage problems in that area. Same thing happened with the widening of 802 in Garden Park area. And I know we've designed a project to handle that, is starting. And Ben has been able to get some concessions from the state, and they'll provide some funding because they admitted that they had a problem. It's a matter of simply approaching the state and trying to address that issue, and they will contribute. They'll come to the table. But of course, there is, and in some other places, there's been some very aggressive lawsuits filed against TechDOT for drainage problems. The question is maintain that relationship with TechDOT so that some of that funding for roads.
Very simple example I could give you as part of that was when the state reached the agreement with the city that they would send the runoff from the expressway to the drainage ditch at the Brownsville Country Club. You know, where did that brainchild come from? You know, we all know that the Brownsville Country Club is one of our first areas to flood, yet you're sending the expressway runoff into the Brownsville Country Club ditches.
Exactly. And the position in the past has been to not necessarily oppose them. And now you have some basis now, a technical basis, because you really couldn't predict. And that's the advantage of these models. They're probably the most, the highest state of art in terms of being able to predict what the impacts would be. As opposed to before, you have some back-of-the-envelope calculations. Now you can show it in a fairly substantial way and technically defensible way that it's going to have an impact. So that's one advantage. And to sit down with TechDOT before the projects are designed so that you minimize the impacts. So yes, on both counts. It makes sense to work with them. And in fact, in Morrison Road, we've made it clear that drainage can be a major problem. And the typical solution of simply creating a big enough pipe to send the water off is not going to solve the problem.
Okay.
We'll have a short three-minute break so you can stretch your legs.
I know. A lot of talk and no answer.
And he hasn't lost any of his humor.
Good to see you, sir.
Why don't you talk to him about it?
Not a problem.
Throw it all in there.
Yeah, I went to sit in the chair. I saw him there.
Glad you settled.
Huh?
Glad you settled.
I'd like to go on the face.
They're not here either? Do we have names in our list?
Yes, they're right here. One of them, Erica. They added another one, should be Shelley.
You have that over there with the mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask her? I don't think she will.
Yeah, he was, see, he was getting work on his legs when he found the hand.
I don't know him.
I swear he could fall off on his leg.
I'm barely hanging over there.
Basically, they didn't have as much [inaudible] as he did. But, I mean, I'm watching him walk, and he's having difficulties. You want me to do it?
It's because if they got me with Al, I don't remember if I did. I don't think I did.
I don't know.
I thought, I thought you did.
Probably, I think I did.
I thought, I thought, no, I thought Ernie did. I thought Ernie did, and you seconded it.
I don't know. I need to check.
It's not a majority.
You should do it.
You go ahead and do it.
Do it quick.
Good. As soon as he reads it, and you just say mayor, and regardless of who says it, I'm going to go to you.
Attorney, former United States magistrate. Oh, he is here. Oh, he is here. Good, okay.
Is he here?
The eighth grader, the Speller.
I'm afraid nobody called him.
Are they here right now?
Thank you, sir.
We'll talk about it in a while.
Former United States magistrate.
I knew you were going to do that. And like, I knew, I knew that. I knew that fireworks season was going to come in. And I told him, I said, "No way, chief. In no way." I'm sorry.
Nadarshan.
Nadarshan.
Cannon de Sabres.
Is he here tonight or not?
Oh, the tennis teams are here.
There will be big, yes.
Good.
He's cool, man. I'm telling you, my father wanted him.
The only question I have is the process. You know what I mean?
If you call me tomorrow, and I can give her his phone number, and then she could talk to him, yeah, I bet what she tells me.
At the end of the day.
Yeah. Because it might be long. So let me make a copy.
Okay.
One of my issues that I had, I talked to Mr. Rose.
Yeah.
Decide to put their park in different, I think it's going to cause a lot of problems. Currently, right now, they're parking to the apartment.
Is this the other apartment?
No, no, that's the, that's the, the one on Boca Chica in Central.
If I could get the commissioners back, please?
She wants to talk about the email you sent him.
I know we're missing two.
Let me ask the following special citizens to please step forward to the podium to read this in the Pledge of Allegiance. Erica Coronado, fifth grader from El Jardín Elementary. Proud child of Blanca Coronado. Brendan Lee Sanchez, third grader from Rosa del Castillo Elementary. Proud parent, Eva Sanchez. And Shelley Fernandez, also from El Jardín Elementary. Is Shelley here? If I could ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and indivisible.
What a voice.
It's going to be a big round of applause.
I'd like to ask our city chaplain, how about that, Bob, to please step forward for our invocation this evening.
And I would like for all of us to have a moment of silence for our Brownsville boy, Manchecha, and his family, and all the families of all those that have gone before him in this terrible war. And at the same time, pray for all of our servicemen and women around the globe. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thanking you in advance for the rains that will hit part of, I hope, all of Brownsville. We need the rain for our beautiful green lawns, for our Rosacas, for just clean air. And Lord, we ask you to give wisdom to our mayor, to our city manager, to all the heads of the departments, to the commissioners as they proceed this evening with a heavy agenda. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance and direction, not only in all of our lives, but for the city of Brownsville. In Jesus' name, amen.
You may be seated. We have several proclamations this evening. I venture to guess that's why we have such a full crowd, because everybody's here on a good note. First presentation's going to be to the junior tennis champ, but Commissioner Sisnadas is going to do that presentation. So we're going to go to the next one. And I'd like to ask, well, the best speller, as far as I'm concerned in this entire country, Nadarshan Anna Decevum, to please step forward along with his parents. For those of you who may not have read the paper or been watching television a few weeks ago, we had the honor of having this young man on national television, representing not only himself and his family, but his school and his community in all of South Texas at the Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee. We have a proclamation because it's not every day, first of all, that we have such an eloquent and educated and learned young man in our commission, but somebody who's brought so much honor and prestige to our community at the ripe old age of 13, right? 14? 13. A proclamation of the City Commissioner of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Nadarshan Anna Decevum for his placement in the top 10 in the 2006 Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee. Whereas Nadarshan Anna Decevum is a 13-year-old eighth-grade student in Brownsville St. Joseph Academy. And whereas for the past four years, Nadarshan has completed, has competed, see, I can't even spell that, has competed in the Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, finishing 85th, 47th, 37th, before finishing in eighth place out of 275 contestants in this year's competition in Washington, DC. Whereas a native of New York, Nadarshan, the son of proud parents, Loga and Subara Anna Decevum, lived in Sri Lanka before coming to Brownsville. And whereas Nadarshan, who received a certificate and cash award on his eighth-place finish, has brought honor to his city, his school, and his family, has set an example for future generations of students to follow, and for this, we are proud to have him in our city. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commissioner of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby recognize and congratulate Nadarshan Anna Decevum on his outstanding achievement in finishing in eighth place out of 275 competitors in the 2006 Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, and further wish him well in his future pursuits of lexicon excellence. Done on this 20th day of June, signed by the mayor and the city commissioners. Nadarshan, you've done us proud. Congratulations, son.
Congratulations.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come here and share my experience at the National Spelling Bee. I am extremely honored and proud to have represented the Valley in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I'd like to thank my friends, teachers, well-wishers, and all those who have supported me during the Spelling Bee. I couldn't have done it without your support. I'd also like to thank my sponsor, Valley Food Newspapers, because without them, none of this could have been able to happen. Most of all, I'd like to thank my parents and my family, because without their time and effort in helping me, there's no way I could have done as well as, as well as I did. Now, I'm gonna tell you about my experiences with the National Spelling Bee. First, to get there, I had to win the class, school, banza and regional spelling bees. These prepared me for the National Spelling Bee. After winning the regional one, I made an effort to persevere and study hard, even during the late nights, to learn new spelling words, their meanings and origins. I knew that to do well, it would take an extraordinary effort. But I'm glad to say that I kept studying and persevered through mental fatigue. My advice to future spellers would be to never quit, even when things aren't looking too good, because in the long run, trust me, it's all worth it. Overall, I learned many new words, built up my vocabulary and found out some interesting roots for foreign words. But the most important thing that I developed was my study habit. I might use the knowledge that I gain quite frequently, but I'll use my study habits throughout the rest of my life. And I'd like to end with a famous quote. "Education is not the filling of a pill, but it's the lighting of a fire." Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm sure I speak for everybody in Brownsville, Nadarshan, when I say that you've done us so, so very proud and you set the bar high. I hope many of the kids that are here this evening, that are watching and will be reading about this, realize that you have set quite an example that I hope many of them will follow. Good luck to you and all your future endeavors, and I got a feeling this won't be the last time we hear about your exploits. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask another talented group of children, the junior tennis champs, to please step forward for some recognition. Go ahead and face the camera.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing members of Brownsville Junior Team Tennis who are advancing to national finals play. Whereas junior team tennis is one of the fastest-growing sports and category in Brownsville and throughout Texas. And whereas local junior players compete at the Brownsville Tennis Center in three different levels. Beginners ages six through nine, intermediate ages nine through fourteen, and advanced, advanced ages fifteen through eighteen, including three intermediate and five advanced teams competing in the Texas Sectionals Tournament May nineteenth through the twenty-first in New Braunfels, Texas. And whereas intermediate team of local players, ten to fourteen years of age, won the championship in New Braunfels and will represent the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Tennis Center in the national tournament October twentieth through the twenty-second, two thousand and six, in Tucson, Arizona. And where, Tucson, Arizona? And whereas Team High Rollers has seven players advancing to national competition, including Bernardo Vallejo, Memo Rico, Raúl Garza, Ariana Castillo, María Fernanda Cárdenas, Sofia Montemayor, Noemi Reyes Baldazo, coached by Raúl Garza, with Cassie Gudell serving as junior team commissioner for Brownsville. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize members of the High Rollers Brownsville Junior Team Tennis squad, who will represent our city at Tucson, Arizona, in the national tournament October twentieth through the twenty-second, two thousand and six, and further wish them success in the upcoming competition. Done on this, on this, the twentieth day of June, two thousand and six, signed by our mayor, Eddie Trevino Jr., and this Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations, guys. Memo, your team captain.
Well, first, I'd like to start off by thanking all the players of our team that have competed in, in New Brownsville and have just won. I'd like to thank them, because without them, we wouldn't be here. Um, I'd like to thank all our parents for supporting us with what we need, all those rackets that we've thrown and everything. They always support us with the money to get another one and classes and everything. I'd also like to thank, um, well, everyone here that has come to support us and watched and seen us, um, seen us, well, here, I guess.
And we'll be waiting when you come back with the championship.
Yes. And I hope we win over there.
We wish you the best of luck.
Well.
See you in Tucson.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Al Centeno to please step forward. For those of you who had the honor and privilege of attending our dedication ceremony at Veterans Park on May the twenty-ninth, many, many people put a lot of hard work and effort into seeing the park actually come to fruition, but Mr. Centeno helped coordinate that beautiful dedication ceremony, and I'd like to recognize his efforts. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and thanking Al Centeno for his efforts in opening, helping opening Veterans Park. Whereas Al Centeno is a native of Brownsville, graduated from Brownsville High School in nineteen sixty-nine, and has been married to Eliakantu for forty-five years, and has married three, and has three children, a boy and two girls. And whereas Al Centeno has long been known and appreciated for his community volunteerism, including our city's bicentennial observance, the Mr. Amigo Organization, the co-founding of the annual Taste de la Frontera event, coordinating the record-breaking visit to our city in nineteen eighty-five by President Ronald Reagan, and his work to bring the two-party system to Cameron County. And whereas Al Centeno has been a loyal and dedicated member of the Knights of Columbus for the past thirty years. And whereas Al Centeno accepted the responsibility of coordinating the grand opening of Brownsville Veteran Park on May the twenty-ninth, two thousand and six, and through his work and organizational skills, was a major force in making the event the success that it was. And whereas Brownsville is fortunate to have a citizen such as Al Centeno, and it is important that he be recognized for his good works and dedication to the city of Brownsville. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank Al Centeno for his lifelong service to our community, and most recently, his skillful coordination of the grand opening of Veterans Park in our city. Done on this twentieth day of June, two thousand and six. Al, thank you for everything you've done for our community.
Congratulations, Al.
And before you say a few words, I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Cowan from Senator Eddie Lucio's office to please step forward to also make another presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On behalf of State Senator Eddie Lucio, who couldn't be here today, I would like to present this special flag that was flown on Memorial Day for an awesome citizen of the state of Texas, okay? I know he's an awesome citizen of the city of Brownsville and Cameron County, but you are really a great citizen of the state of Texas. So on behalf of Senator Eddie Lucio, I'd like to present this flag that was flown on Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and six, to you.
Congratulations.
All right.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Commissioners, and citizens of Brownsville, this is just as small a token that I have done for the city of Brownsville, besides serving my country, and making this place a much better than what I found it when I got here and I was born, and I'm racing on this city, and I still think this is the best city throughout the world, as I had traveled myself to other cities. I think we have a good chance to really grow up and grow and grow and grow till we meet something like San Antonio or something. We have, as long as we keep leadership like the one we have now, I'm sure we will accomplish this dream. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
All right, our next proclamation, I'd like to ask Mr. B. Wadwani, just please step forward. Commissioner Atkinson?
Go down there.
Yes, of course, she can step forward.
My first proclamation, I just wanted to do it down here, I think it'll be the last one. I wanted to just recognize a man who has done so much for Brownsville. A proclamation of City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing B. Wadwani, or Wadi, for his many continued contributions to the city. Whereas Wadi, a native of India, now a part of Pakistan, was rich, reared in Indonesia, educated in Singapore, and came to Brownsville in eighteen seventy-six, opened his first business in our city called the Indian Keke. Whereas Wadi, twenty-five years ago, married his wife, Kita. And what he says is a great example of the arranged marriage that worked. And now, married, has two children, two boys and one girl. And whereas Wadi was quick to recognize the potential of American dream and set to work to realize that dream, and has now become one of the largest property owners in our city, and in South Texas, building and operating hotels throughout the valley by volunteering in civic and charitable organizations. And whereas Wadi has involved himself with Road to International, co-founded the Local Hotel, Hotel Association, is a member of the Appraisement History, is an avid supporter of local sports and sports enthusiasts, and, and, and as I quote, because I like to help build Brownsville, pitched in to help the Veterans Park open, hosting a VIP reception afterwards. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank B. Wadi, Wadi, for the help he has given to our community for the past thirty years, and to let it be known that he is living proof that the American, American dream exists and that it is never goes wrong, to work. On this day, the twentieth, June, two thousand and six, signed by the mayor, Eddie Trevino Jr., and the rest of the commission.
If your wife gives you permission, you can say a few words, Wadi.
Respect Mayor, respect Commissioners. You know, I've been here thirty years in Brownsville. And what I've seen ups and downs of Brownsville all the time, you know? When my first children came to Brownsville from Dallas, they hated it. I mean, they really hated it. They want to go back. They told me, "Pap, I want to go back to Dallas." But eventually, they stayed over here for a long period of time. Now they loved it. Now I tell them, "Go back," they don't want to go back, you know? You can hate Brownsville, you can love Brownsville, but Brownsville is your home. I always treated Brownsville like my mother. I respect Brownsville, and you know, Brownsville is my home. I give extra miles all the time to Brownsville to love Brownsville. Let me tell you something about China and India is growing very fast. Mr. Mayor, you know that. My brother-in-law came here last month over here from Hong Kong. He's been staying over there like fifty years in Hong Kong. He has a factory in Hong, in China, Bangladesh and Jordan. He supplies a lot of clothing to JCPenney and other companies over here. He told me, there's an American company who went to, in China, in a small town with a population of about ten thousand people. They talked to the mayor, because their laws were different. They couldn't fit in, in that town, the American company. The mayor asked them to stay twenty-four hours, "We'll see what we can do." They had a special meeting at eleven o'clock at night and talked to the Commissioners. And then he came in the morning to the American business people, and the things were changed on that night, and tell them everything is okay, now you can come and stay. If they can do it, we can also do it, though. Look at the Sisnero, he was American, he's a Mexican-American, how did he change it over there? We can also change it over here. There's no such thing as that we cannot do. You know, the failure and success is always a man's will. If you have a will, we can do it, though. There's nothing else, you know? I don't believe when they tell me, "No." My children always tell me, "No, you have to try first." You cannot tell me, "No, you cannot do it." We can do it. I mean, if we have a unity and we have the guts, we can do it, anything we want, though, you know? And I'd like to thank you again, and it's a honor for me having this, I thank you. And wherever I'll be in this part of the world, India or China, Brownsville might be far away from my eyes, but will always be near to my heart. I thank you all.
Thank you, Wadi. Commissioner Rojo, our next presentation is Mrs. Felipa M. Rodriguez.
Senora Rodriguez? Welcome. I must tell you in the audience that I owe Mrs. Rodriguez a thousand apologies, because at the last commission meeting, somehow or other, I wrote an email reminding her about this important meeting that was going to be on the sixth, but I wrote that it was on the ninth. And she showed up with all of her family on the ninth. The commission meeting was on the sixth. Obviously, we weren't here. Thank you so much for coming, Mrs. Rodriguez. Yes. May I present? And now I'll read. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Mrs. Felipa M. Rodriguez. Whereas Felipa Rodriguez has dedicated fifty years of her professional life to public health and the provision of medical services. Whereas Felipa Rodriguez has responded to the needs of the city of Brownsville residents in a unique and outstanding way. And whereas Felipa Rodriguez has excelled in the sterile technique process, which has become a standard of care for public health in the city of Brownsville. Felipa M. Rodriguez has, with a smile, touched the lives at one time or another of many patients who have passed through the doors of the Brownsville Community Health Center. And whereas the Board of Directors, the staff of the Brownsville Community Health Center admire and appreciate the quality of work and Felipa's dedication to the service and to the patients of the clinic, the city of Brownsville is proud to have this exemplary role model in its sitting, providing quality care with dignity for over fifty years. Therefore, we, the members of the city- we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of this city, do hereby recognize and congratulate Mrs. Felipa M. Rodriguez on her fifty years of service and employment with the Brownsville Community Health Center, and further wish her many, many more years of service to this community. This was done on the sixth day of June, 2006, and it was signed by Mayor Eddie Travino and all of the Commissioners. Felicitaciones, Senora Rodriguez.
Absolutely.
I want to... Good evening to everyone.
It'll come down. There you go.
Good evening to everyone, and I would like to thank everyone involved in making this possible for me. This is a great honor, and I really, really, I feel very happy about it. I also want to thank my family for supporting me, even though I feel like Brownsville Community Health Center should get the award instead of me for allowing me to stay this long in their service. And also, as we know it, by the, by BCHC, is a fine place to work and learn as you work, and have fun doing what you like to do and what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, our last presentation is to CDCB Youth Build, Commissioner Rojo. Who's here on behalf of CDCB Youth Build? There you go, come on up. For the camera.
This is the proclamation from the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, and we're recognizing students of CDCB's Youth Build of Brownsville, the Extreme Makeover. Whereas the students of the Community Development Corporation's CDCB Youth Build Program, a comprehensive youth and community development program, whose students are encouraged to engage in the beautification and renovation of their community through interactive learning, were introduced to different environmental education tutorials on litter prevention, recycling, buying recycled products, and graffiti removal, and also organized and transformed a ten-thousand-square-foot lot into a community garden at Proyecto Digna in Cameron Park during the National Youth Service Day. And whereas youth build students, working with community mentors, the City of Brownsville's Public Works and Recreation Division, and such organizations as Rotary Club, the Healthy Communities of Brownsville, the Brownsville Beautification Committee, and the Weed and Seed Organization, they picked up more than seventeen tons of trash community-wide. And whereas the students of the Extreme Makeover Program have distinguished themselves as outstanding environmental stewards and leaders through their dedication to the community and environmental improvements by setting the example for every citizen to take responsibility for keeping our community beautiful and clean, whereas their efforts have earned them the 2006 Keep Texas Beautiful Ruth Jackson Leadership Award for off-campus youth groups. Now, therefore, we, the members of this City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, we do hereby recognize each and every one of the students and participants of the Youth Build Extreme Makeover Program for their efforts in making Brownsville a cleaner, healthier, and more beautiful place to live. This was done on the twentieth day of June, 2006, and it was signed by your Mayor Eddie Travino and City Commissioners. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Y'all want to say a few words? Keep it up.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here tonight to represent Youth Build Brownsville. Youth Build has made many positive changes in my life as well as many classmates. They showed us how to be responsible and help out our community. For example, we helped, we helped clean up the Sunrise Park, helped plant trees and flowers on Earth Day, and also helped set up different events throughout the community, like Cancer Relay, 5K Mile Run, and the Turkey Truck. We are also members of an organization, Americorps, that has helped out around the communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. All right, Commissioners. Let's see, we can get through this agenda quickly.
Get to work.
Item two, consent agenda.
Item two, consent agenda, items A through H.
Move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longo, seconded by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item three, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Mayor.
Commissioner Zanetti.
I'd like to appoint a Brownsville City Attorney, and also he's a former US magistrate, Mr. Robert Guerra. Think he'd do a good job for the City of Brownsville and Brownsville PUB and all the citizens.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zanetti, seconded by Commissioner Dananda, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item four.
Item four, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2006-1100.37, an ordinance amending the city code by adding a new section entitled Prevention of Demolition by Neglect and Dealing with Related Matters, including $2,000 penalties.
Mayor, City Commissioners, the reason we're here today is an ordinance for demolition by neglect or prevention of demolition by neglect. And in your packets, there were two versions. The first version, or version A, was what was adopted by the PNZ when we, and came forward to you as a recommendation from the PNZ. But in conversation with the National Trust, we came up with a version that was approved by the Heritage Council, and it's a different version from the PNZs. And the major differences are that the PNZs limited the enforcement to only sites, historic sites, and not non-contributing sites in the O-11. The version B covers every site in the O-11 overlay district. And the other one, the other difference is in the version A, you have a hardship provision, and in the version B, it removes that provision. So we're talking about maintenance of historic properties in an overlay district, not restoration of those sites. So we're talking about paint, we're talking about minor repairs so that that particular building or structure is stabilized.
The, well, we tabled it back in February, refresh our recollection. Why is that?
We tabled it for a rewrite. We actually spent quite a bit of time reviewing this with the National Trust. There were 2,000 other cities that have a very similar ordinance to this, and we felt that it should be more in line with those and that it fit Brownsville better.
Okay, because of the historical aspect, okay.
Correct. And the National Trust, we've run this by them, and they certainly endorsed version B. We've had not only conversations with their Southwest office, but their attorneys in Washington as well.
Did, did this have to go back to the PNZ?
We did not take it back to them because we brought you the recommendations that they, it's only a recommendation from PNZ, and that's what we're pushing.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's no prerequisite that it has to go for a vote to the PNZ before it comes to the City Commission. All right. And I assume that the various groups of interest with regards to historical renovation in Brownsville are in support of your recommendation?
As noted, the Heritage Council especially strongly supports it. It comes to the point as to, do we want to preserve our community or do we not, so?
Any other questions?
Want to close public hearing?
Hold on, Commissioner Rojo.
That was it. I was going to move to close public hearing, and I was going to state that I sit on that board, and it's been discussed thoroughly, and we're all in favor of this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Rojo, seconded by Commissioner Longo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longo, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Version B, though.
I'm sorry?
Version B.
Right. That's your recommendation, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item five.
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-27 to rezone from dwelling A classification to general retail A classification, 1.069 acres out of block 86 of Los Ebonos Properties, near Rockwell Drive and Shidler Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is the property shaded in red where the proposed zoning change is being recommended by the Plan Zoning Commission. This is Schauder, and you have Rockwell going here. The building's in place. It used to be an old pronto store, but they never had the proper zoning. They would like the proper zoning with this case. The Plan Zoning Commission were announced to approve this recommendation to you.
This is a public hearing.
So move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Zanetti.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Zanetti, seconded by Commissioner Rojo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-28 to rezone from apartment J classification to general retail J classification, lots one and two and Boulevard lots 28, 30, and 32 of block BB of Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, near Boca Chica Boulevard and Central Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, City Commissioners, this is the Boca Chica, and you have Central Boulevard. If you know the area, this would be the Rancho Grande Apartments. The property is for sale. What we know at this time is that a Walgreens is being proposed on this corner. The applicant in this case would like to rezone the total site that, of the apartment complex for future expansion. The, there was one nay vote on the Plan Zoning Commission, one because of the proximity to the school. At this point...
Is that Russell?
Russell.
Russell Elementary, and this is Russell Drive. Right now, we do not know, as staff, we're concerned about future entrances and additional traffic on Russell. So what we proposed as a PNZ, to a PNZ was to only rezone the site needed for, for the Walgreens store. We have a meeting with the developer of Walgreens next week, and we would, wanted to wait till that point, but the PNZ voted with one nay vote to go ahead and recommend the zoning change on this application.
Is H, the two Hs there, is that still part of the property?
No.
No.
No, because you have, you have the mechanic shop here and the car wash.
And then there's a Circle K across the street and HEB catty-cornered there, right?
Yes, you have Circle K here, and you have a washetery, you have HEB on this side, and you have another gas station on this side, and of course, all of this is commercialized.
Mayor, originally had, as I spoke to Ben and I spoke to individuals regarding the property, I wanted to see that we tabled it for the fact, as we spoke earlier before the meeting regarding, you know, Russell Elementary is just catty-cornered to the actual proposed site, and the original talks was only a little portion of it, and they want all or nothing. I think without seeing a specific plan, it's, I think the message is to the children and the people in that area to go ahead and table it. I like to table it to the July 5th meeting so that the, so that the firm can come back with the plan that shows us where's parking, where's, I think there's some issues there that need to be identified, and which we don't currently know right now.
They will be providing a proper buffer. Well, right, that's, I think that's the concern that Commissioners raise. We don't know that yet.
I think the school, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think the school is the buffer between the commercial and the neighborhood, and also, when you go through the site process, the permit process, I'm sure you're going to take into consideration the ingress and egress of all the, all the possible points on the entire plat of property, aren't you, Ben?
Commissioner, and I'm also sure that, you know, somebody like Walgreens is going to come in, they're going to take the proper steps to adequately provide for the, for the area that they're going to be serving.
The state will also control, the state will also control the entrances on Central and Boca Chica because they're state highways.
We saw the site plan for Walgreens, and we overlaid it on this, on this site, and that's what we were proposing as staff. Our recommendation was only to do the Walgreens site because they did provide a site plan, and their entrances were from Central and were from Boca Chica.
What's their response as to not giving a site plan or...
Prior to.
Or to the, to the other...
They haven't bought it yet.
They need, they need to acquire the site, and they don't have specific businesses right now. They would like to expand it later for Shopping Plaza. Also, the engineer for the project is here, Mr. Rose. He may want to comment further on that. But we haven't seen any site right now. Right now, it's just buying the property. They have a first tenant, which will be Walgreens, and the rest, we do not know at this time.
Was there any opposition from the neighbors at all? None at all?
Isn't there a Walgreens two blocks away now?
I was going to say, it's about, yeah, maybe a little bit further.
There's a second Walgreens on Elizabeth and Central. Section of Boca Chica and Central.
They're not going to close that one, are they?
Probably are.
That's questions that we'll ask with Walgreens Development Firm next week.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Jim Rose. I'm with the firm of Mahian Rose, and we aren't the engineers for any project. We happened to have surveyed the property in preparation for closing, and we were hired by Shamrock Ventures to process the zoning application.
Is there a date set for the closing?
Yes, there is.
What is it?
Specific date, I don't know, except when I met with Noe Puga back in April and outlined the potential, well, potential uses and application, the dates were extremely critical in relation to the contract for sale. And they need, they really need for it to come down in the cycle that we're on right now.
Commissioner Camarillo is asking for a two-week, less than two-week delay.
I'd like to see a site plan for that other section that's not...
Have they told you what ideas they have for the other section, the other lot?
The apartment owners will sell only the entire 9.433 acres. They will not sell just the corner for the Walgreens. Development of the site cannot happen until they phase out the apartments, obviously, and they're not going to go out, run everybody off on the same day. It's going to take years, two or three years probably, to get the apartments closed down.
Right now, apartments occupy the entire area, right?
That's correct.
That's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be an extended period of time before it's done.
Mayor, and answer your questions about the other Walgreens. I don't know whether they're going to close the other one or not.
It's very close. It's half a mile.
Down on Elizabeth Street. And they're on a very tight schedule. They have a large amount of earnest money down on this, this contract, as well as very high penalties for every day that it's delayed in closing.
If we were to approve it, Ben, what would be the worst-case scenario? What could they put there?
They could put a retail shopping plaza, they could put a, maybe a Circle K and HEB.
And this is, this is a, this is a rezoning, it's not a specific.
That's right, and we do have a second hearing, Mayor, or second consent. If there's something very adverse after we meet with, with the applicants, we...
I think maybe that's the way to do it, Commissioner. Maybe we can approve it, vote on it, but address these issues so that we get some better answers, and if we're not satisfied with it, then we can...
We still have to approve it on second reading, so.
And staff is not opposed to the rezoning, it's just we want to know where the entrance is.
Yeah, that's so. And I think that's a fair...
And that's my concern.
Sure, Mr. Puga looks at it real closely.
Obviously, we want it as far away from the school and the neighborhood as possible, closer to Boca Chica and Central.
I don't know if there's ever been a common practice that we have to see a site plan before we approve a zoning. We've basically approved the type of business going to go in there. It's a first, second, third, fourth commercial, but never actually looked at the site plan first, so.
Again, my question is regarding the ingress and regress, since it's adjacent right next to the school. That's my, I guess that's my questioning towards that.
Well, there won't be a bar there. I mean, that's...
And that'll be, that'll be decided during, during the permitting process, right, where the entrances next to the... I think that's a legitimate concern, though, Commissioner.
Yes.
I think that's a legitimate concern he's got.
I think we can...
Look at it, look at it in two weeks.
All right, so this is, well, this is a public hearing. Anybody else? Mr. Holtzman? Had an idea you might be here for this.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Larry Holtzman. I own some property nearby. I think this is a positive step in Brownsville. I believe that during the building permitting process and plating, you can do a lot of checking at that time, but I believe that this is something we don't want to hold up and show them that we're not for some progress. I think they get the message that we're concerned, but I believe that this is all, all retail. I think it'll help the entire... concerned, but I believe that this is all, all retail. I think it'll help the entire area and I think this would be something that could, should be approved today. Thank you.
Let me, let me ask you, Larry, was, did you attend the, the zoning hearings?
Yes, I attended the zoning.
Were there any other local, any other landowners?
And there were no landowners there. The, the reason why there was a vote nay is because one of the P and Z Commissioners was just appointed Assistant Principal, as I understand, of Russell.
Oh.
And he wanted to abstain, but they said you can't abstain because there weren't enough Commissioners to vote, so they said vote no. He did. So that's why you have a nay vote.
All right, all right. Anybody else, public hearing? All right, this is.
So move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Royall, seconded by Commissioner Longori, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash twenty-nine to rezone from dwelling Z classification to medium retail G classification, lot six of block two of Pasto Verde subdivision phase one near FM one hundred and FM eight oh three.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the lot in question. This is Highway one hundred going to Los Fresnos. This is eight oh three. We are inside city limits here. The Plan Zoning Board unanimously to recommend this approval of this application to you.
It's the, the small one?
The, the property shaded in red.
Okay, that's the one, it's next to the Circle K or somewhere around there?
Uh, no. Oh, no, the Circle K is right here.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other comments? This is a public hearing.
So move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Nettles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash thirty-one to rezone from dwelling Z classification to medium retail G classification, one acre out of lot seven of block four oh eight of El Harding's subdivision near Boca Chica Boulevard and Medford Avenue.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is Medford Avenue and then you have Boca Chica. This is a property shaded in red. The Plan Zoning Board unanimously to recommend this application to you.
Any questions? Public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longori, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Mrs. Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash thirty-two dash S to allow a light commercial specific use in a general retail use classification for eight point zero thirty-four acres out of block sixteen of El Harding subdivision near, near Boca Chica Boulevard and Minnesota Avenue.
Honorable Mayor, this is property shaded in red. This is Boca Chica. This is the Brownsville South Patrick Allen Airport and you have Minnesota Road here. This is a specific use for a used car lot. The Plan Zoning Board unanimously to recommend approval of this application.
This is a public hearing.
Close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longori, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioners Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash thirty-three dash S to allow a general retail specific use in a general retail use district for lot three of Sunrise Commons subdivision, number seven, located near Expressway seventy-seven eighty-three and Pablo Casal Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the plaza that would benefit from the, from the sign. This is a specific use for the sign and you want to put the sign up? This is, uh, this is a, it's not there yet, but this is an imposed on this picture of the proposed sign that we, that would be built for this little plaza. The Plan Zoning Commission will unanimously to recommend approval of this application to you.
This is a public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Nettles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner, Mrs. Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Longori, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eleven.
Item eleven, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to conclude the appraisal process and transfer of deed for the Villareforma subdivision street and entryway to the Villareforma Homeowners Association in consideration for the association agreement to maintain and preserve the roadway for public ingress and egress.
Mayor and Commissioner Camarillo, if I may, I had been asked previously by Mr. Camarillo to review this in response to a request from the Homeowners Association at Villareformas, Villareforma to consider deeding them the roadway to their, to the street. They initially purchased the land believing that it's going to be possible for them to own the, the street outright, but there was some confusion between themselves and the developer and the ultimate objective for the homeowners was to be able to build a gate. Villareforma subdivision is a one-block street that branches off of Ruben Torres Boulevard eight oh two, almost, almost all the way over to two eighty-one. It's a, it's a one-block cul-de-sac with one entrance and the homeowners had desired, really their, their sole interest was to be able to make it a gated community, which when they bought their individual lots, they believed it was going to be. The only way for the city to allow them to put a gate is for them to own the street. It's permissible under the Local Government Code, section two seventy-two, for the city to deed them the, the roadway, provided that there's an appraisal done and that there's an agreement on their Homeowners Association part that, that money is allocated to an account specifically for the maintenance of the roadway. That would be the consideration that the city would be receiving in, in, in order to deed the, the residents, the, the roadway which they're, they're trying to acquire for the purpose of making it a gated community.
What happens when that money runs out? Or what if it's not enough to pay for one overlay or whatever?
Then it would revert back to the city and the city would continue to own and operate the roadway.
I'm just, I'm asking because let's just say, for example, the appraisal comes back at, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand and that might last, I don't know, a couple or, I don't know how long that would last, but let's just say it lasted for five years and we're able to maintain it, fix the potholes. We're supposed to invoice the work done on that particular street, right?
Actually, they would own it and it would be their responsibility to, to make the repairs for the street. It would be their street.
Are they signing? Well, I thought, I thought, I thought what I understood you're saying is that the money that they would pay us would have to be dedicated for maintenance of that street.
That's correct. The consideration the city would receive in order to deed them the property would be the, the amount of the repairs which they themselves were willing to put into the street.
I thought, I thought, what's, well, what's going to get appraised?
The value of the street.
Okay, so the value of the street ends up being, you know, for argument's sake, ten thousand or fifty thousand, whatever it is. What do the city, they're supposed to pay us that money or we're supposed to pay them?
That's the value the city has to receive in order to.
So they're supposed to pay us that amount of money, whatever the appraisal says.
We have to receive that, that amount of value, correct?
Oh, they don't have to pay us, but they've got to do that amount of maintenance work?
We can convey it, sell it, or deed it to them in, in consideration for the, the reasonable market value, which is established by an appraisal. In this case, the, the value of the city, to the city would be, the city does not have to.
Maintain it.
Maintain the roadway, yes, sir. And once the city had been, had an agreement with the Homeowners Association that a certain amount from each homeowner would be allocated to that road repair fund, then we would be allowed to deed that to them and with a reversionary clause that if, if they stopped funding that or stopped making the repairs on their own, up to that amount of value, then it would revert back to the city. If they maintain it up to the value of, to the city, then, and then stop, in essence, it would be their roadway. They would have paid for it and the city would no longer have, have any ownership obligations or rights.
Mayor, I may add to that. I met out there with the, with the association about a month, about two months ago and each one of the members of the association which owns property in there is very well aware that for whatever reason, any digging needs to be done by PUB or pipe bust, whatever cases, they are aware that as an association, they are going to address the problem and pay for the, the, you know, pay to correct the, the problem to the road. Again, they're, they're asking for a gate that, in which they've paid for and again, the street, although not, not placed by the city, not paid for by the city, the developer gave the road back to the city, so the city hasn't endured any cost of the actual street or any pavement or things like that, but the, the association is well aware that whatever changes may be, may be needed to be done to the road, that they will, they will.
The emergency services concern has been addressed?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
They'll be able to get access in the event. That was the other concern I know that was raised.
EMS, they would each have a, a control, the newspaper individuals, the cable, they'd each have access to get into the gate. That's the way the, the system was when they first purchased it and, and.
I just don't, my concern is, and I, I, I want to help these individuals accomplish what it is they want, but I don't want after a certain amount of time, basically, to, you know, for us to be left holding the bag. You know what? This is getting to be too expensive or whatever the case might be and then we're going to have some title or deed issue problems. That's my concern. But I know this what they want and you've, legally, we can do it.
Yes, sir, provided.
It's their responsibility to maintain it.
Correct. And up to the value that the city has to receive in exchange for the, to the conveyance.
So, then what happens after that value's used?
Well, we can include in the, in the agreement that if at any time they cease to maintain it properly, that it would revert back to the city. But. Well, my concern had been that the city received in exchange for the conveyance, the, the reasonable market value for the property and there have been other instances in which ongoing maintenance and the expenses incurred by the homeowners was considered sufficient consideration to, to justify a conveyance and to constitute the market value that's, that the city must receive in order to make the, the transfer. If the city was concerned about having, I mean, I think the way I had looked at it was it would be an obligation on the part of the owner to maintain the property. If they, after the, after they've maintained it up to the value of the roadway, if they cease to maintain it, it would continue to be their obligation to do so. The city at that time, if we, if we wanted to make this part of the agreement, we could include now a reversionary clause so that it would revert back to the city, but then that returns to us the obligation of making the repairs.
I think what I'm trying to say is if they want it, they can have it.
That's how I assumed the commission would.
That's correct and that's exactly what they want. They're aware of that.
Of course, there would, we would retain easements and right-of-ways for PUB and any other utilities that necessary to get in there and make repairs and so forth. That would, that would remain in the public domain.
Commissioner?
Move to approve.
All right.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Royall, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve.
Item twelve, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to execute all final documents concerning acceptance of a donation and transfer of title for real property located on Harrison and Seventh Street from the Etoria Estate formerly known as the Franciscan School.
Mayor, members of the commission, when we initially began studying the situation with the, with the real property where the Boys and Girls Club is cited, the Catholic Diocese of Brownsville was actually managing the property and had, and had ownership interest to the property, subject to a conveyance by the Etoria Trust and Foundation where they conveyed the property to the diocese, provided that it continued to be used for youth educational programs. Because the, the programs were actually terminated there for a period of time, the Etoria Trust Foundation has elected to exercise their reversionary clause. The diocese acknowledges that, that superior interest. The land is now in, the, the, the Etoria Foundation is in the process of exercising that clause in order to regain title to the land. They have indicated that they would be willing to deed the land to the city outright to allow the city to make the necessary improvements and to continue to operate the Boys and Girls Club facilities that exist there. They have not yet been able to, we would have to do an appraisal of that property as well and would have to credit the foundation with that amount of, of a donation to the city, but that's been their proposal to us. They've not yet finalized things on their end so that we have a draft document, but the purpose of, of this on the agenda would be to ask the, the commission's permission to allow the city manager to execute the final documents so that we could accept the donation when the foundation has been able to complete their paperwork to, to be able to offer it to us.
So move, Mayor.
Mr. Cavler, I assume this is, you'd recommend that.
Yes, sir, I do.
All right. Motion approved by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item thirteen, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and six dash forty-one, setting a public hearing on updated land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, impact fees, and dealing with related matters.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, as, as you have received the final report of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, with this resolution zero forty-one, what we're asking tonight is for you to designate Tuesday, August the fifteenth, as the public hearing date for the hearing on the impact fees, the update of the land use assumptions, and the capital improvements plan. What this allows is it allows staff to then work backwards and identify the dates where the publications will be printed. The, the state requires a certain amount of days before the public hearing where publications need to appear in the paper.
Isn't this the night of our second meeting for the month in August? Is, is it, is it the plan to have it as part of our regular meeting or is it to have a separate meeting only for the public hearing purposes?
Well, it'll be part of your city commission meeting or if you want to have a specific, special meeting date, then.
I don't know. I just thought that maybe we ought to have a separate.
Special.
Only for this purpose.
I think that would be my recommendation as well, Mayor.
Yeah. What about Wednesday, the sixteenth?
That'll be fine.
Would that work?
Yes.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Royall for August the sixteenth, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and six dash zero forty-two to adopt the flood mitigation assistance program flood mitigation plan as the planning and guidance document for flood mitigation within the city in accordance with the requirements of the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, we had the workshop before the meeting on this, on this plan. I request that you adopt this plan where we would be eligible for FEMA grants in the future.
Any other questions? All right. Motion approved by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to approve an interlocal agreement among the city of Brownsville, Cameron County, Cameron County Drainage District number one, Cameron County Drainage District number three, and the communities of Rancho Viejo and Los Fresnos.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, tonight, we're asking for you to approve this interlocal agreement with the agencies mentioned. What this interlocal agreement will do, if you recall, back in December two thousand and five, I approached this commission asking for permission to apply to the Texas Water Development Board. The Texas Water Development Board has been positive with our request. They are making available over a hundred thousand dollars to the.
We're doing this ourselves, right?
Yes.
We're not going through the Lower Rio Grande Valley?
No. Um, well, I think there is a process. I think that there is a, an agency where you have to go through them, but the, the city will match that grant with sixty-four thousands, sixty-four thousand dollars. If we, if we do get this plan approved by FEMA, of course, it will result in more FEMA funding for the city of Brownsville. Can you put the map up, please, Robert? Just the lighting. But as you can see, in the workshop and the plan that you just approved was for this area here. This is the ETJ of Brownsville. The green is our city limits line. The city of Brownsville is responsible for approving all subdivision plaits in this ETJ. All plaits come to us and we approve them. What this document will do, it will provide very much needed flood mitigation data to the city engineering and the planning department that will, will be able to discuss the subdivision plaits with our local engineers to make sure that, or to assure that they provide adequate flood protection on their subdivisions, but also how that water runs off, off their subdivision and may affect other subdivisions or areas downstream. That's why we believe that this project is very important and we're lucky, we're fortunate enough that, that Texas Water Development Board is willing to participate with the city. The study will concentrate in this, all this blue area here, which. The study will concentrate in all this blue area here, which also encompasses not only ETJ, but also parts of the city of Brownsville, also incorporates parts of Rancho Viejo, Los Fresnos, and the areas here. So I ask for your approval tonight.
Ben, what's the cost to the city on this?
The cost to the city would be $64,583.
Okay, and is there any additional costs to the drainage districts, or in the local agreement, they're just basically allowing us entering into an agreement so we can apply for a grant?
That's correct. It will make available to the city of Brownsville FEMA grants, but it will also be the first flood protection plan for southern Cameron County. The county will participate maybe later, or we can go back to them, because they will need this data, too, and this data will be owned by the city of Brownsville.
Are they going to help participate in any of the matching money that may be needed for any grant?
Yes, yes. The in-kind would be, we could ask them for that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So moved to approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Nando, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 16.
Item 16, consideration and action to authorize the awarded hauling contractor for the city of Brownsville to provide additional services for the Town North Detention Pond Project.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. At the city commission meeting held about a year ago in July of 2005, the commission awarded a term contract for purchase, hauling, delivery of landfill cover materials to Whitewing Ranch. Under that contract section 3.0.6, which was a hauling option number six, the prices may be used for other projects throughout the city for hauling, loading, and excavation, provided that both parties agreed to do so at the established pricing. The bid and subsequent awarded contract amount for this particular service is $4.50 per cubic yard. So to bring us up to today's date, staff has requested from Whitewing Ranch, the established contractor, an agreement to engage this section for the purpose of excavating and hauling approximately 36,408 cubic yards of dirt from the Town North Detention Pond Project. This is the first time that we will bring before you some work to be done on the Town North project. This is not all of the excavation that will be done or needed there. We need to excavate some 130,000 cubic yards. The number of 36,408 was determined by engineering as what is needed to build some berms back on the garden park project, which we've been working on throughout the spring and summer. So basically, what we're doing is asking for you to allow us to access the established contract at the established prices, which by the way are very favorable prices given the fact that fuel has increased dramatically in the last year, and the contractor is willing to honor those established prices. We would like for you to allow us to expend $163,836 for the equivalent amount of 36,408 cubic yards. This is CDBG funded.
Move to approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Nando. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 17.
Item 17, consideration and action to authorize the awarded hauling contractor for the city of Brownsville to provide additional services for the Brownsville Country Club Detention Pond Project.
Bit of a coincidence, but this is exactly the same type of project. All the terms and conditions are exactly the same as in the previous agenda item. The properties have changed. What we're doing here is we're initiating the construction of some detention ponds in the Brownsville Country Club area, specifically on the golf course property which the city owns, as you can see on the overhead there. This will improve dramatically the drainage issues and concerns that we've had over the years in Brownsville Country Club, and will give us a place to store water until it can move into the North Main Drain and then out of that particular area. As it turns out, for our sports park, instead of digging lakes, we need to fill lakes. And so we're going to take the dirt from Brownsville Country Club and move it into the sports park project to fill one of the areas, an area called Lake Volts. We'll still need more dirt on that project, but at this time, we need to move 100,000 yards, which is what's needed to be taken out of Brownsville Country Club. Same prices, same contractor. We're asking you to allow us to attach that contract and expend $450,000, and the funding for this is entirely through BCIC.
And I think, Paul, this is going to, they're going to excavate eight ponds at Brownsville Country Club, and it's going to alleviate a lot of the drainage problems there, so it's a great project. Mayor, I'm moved to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 18.
Item 18, consideration and action to award a contract for capital improvement program 2005 CIP Streets and Drainage Improvement Contract Number Three for West Fifth and Riverside Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, at the request of our engineering director Carlos Lassiter, purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. Those bids were received on May 19th. We received a total of three bids. They were tabulated by the project consulting engineer, Mr. James Rose of Mejia and Rose. We have nothing remarkable to report to you. Our recommendation is to go with the low responsive bid, that being to GNT paving. The amount is $552,789.45, and the funding is from 2006 GEO bond fund, and the estimate was just $20,000 under the bid amount.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nanda, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 19.
Item 19, consideration and action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of bunker gear for the Brownsville Fire Department.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, at the request of our fire chief, Lenny Perez, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. Seal formal bids were opened on May 30th. A total of only one bid was received and thereby tabulated by our department. As in all cases, where a single bid is received, purchasing conducted a cost analysis. Results of the analysis indicate this to be a competitive bid. Also, the prices are consistent with the expiring contract from the incumbent contractor. In other words, we're recommending a new contract with the same contractor we had in the past, that being Costco Industries. The prices, as illustrated in your agenda item, are $700 a piece for the jacket and $500 a piece for the high-backed trouser, or a total of $1,200 for each specialty suit. You can see the photographs of them there. We will purchase up to the limitations of the fire department budget during each fiscal year of this contract.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nanda, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 20.
Item 20, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of five new-model mid-size sedans for the Brownsville Health Department.
Mayor and Commissioners, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project earlier this year. These bids had a requirement to allow for additional purchases at the same prices for a period up to 180 days, so the bids are still open or active. These bids actually were initially received on March 24th. They were competitive bids. We have made awards against the recommendation in the past. Our health department director, Josh Ramírez, was able to scrape several items of his budget together and came up with $63,000. So we are asking for the award to purchase five 2007 model Ford Tauruses to Tipton Ford, a local vendor. The amount of the award is $63,440.
Six-cylinder? Six-cylinder? Six-cylinder Tauruses?
Six-cylinder.
Okay.
V-sake.
He was serious, Paul.
He was serious.
The, um, lost my train of thought there.
Sorry.
Again, they do have the funding in the line item for this budget. The amount is 63,440. Ivan Welker, our fleet administrator, performed a cost analysis, needs assessment. They're going to be retiring five vehicles from their fleet, which have been very heavy service items for us. Those vehicles will go to auction and be replaced by these vehicles at a very competitive price.
Move to approve?
Commissioner Calap, I heard you did very well, your department did very well in the auctions with the old vehicles this past week.
Thank you very much. For the surplus auction of vehicles this year, we tried something new. We went online. We used a Texas-based auction company. We had many, many thousands of hits on our website, which is LoneStarAuctioneers.com. We have, we received total bids for $54,000, which was about three times higher than our estimated $27,000 for those vehicles. So we're very pleased that we're using technology. It's a lot easier on my staff. They don't have to go out and stand in the sun and watch the auctioneer do the auction.
Wait a minute. 54 is three times 27?
Uh...
Twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, twice, all right.
Congratulations.
Good again.
All right, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Nando. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 21.
Item 21, consideration and action to award a broadband service agreement and tower lease agreement as components of the Community Broadband Infrastructure and Infrastructure Consolidation Recommendation Services, known as Enterprise Modernization Project for the City of Brownsville Management Information System Department.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, as you all are well aware, because you've been approving the different phases of the contract, recently, you approved Phase Three of this contract. One of the major components in Phase Three in terms of deliverables from the IBM consulting team would be the infrastructure and the service agreement for the wireless component of our project. We bring to you this evening, and we're going to do a little presentation here, but we bring to you this evening the entire, that entire aspect of the project. If you approve it this evening, then we'll be done with that, and there will only be the software applications remaining, and then about 12 months of installation and a lot of labor for staff to do. I'd like to introduce Paul Van Housen, who is our consultant through IBM. He is in charge of the wireless component, working with staff, and he has an interesting PowerPoint presentation for you, and then I'll continue with staff's recommendation.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, while they're working on the technical details of the PowerPoint, I'll give you a quick briefing on where we are. The-
This is not a good sign, Paul. You understand that, right?
Well, you know, it's technology. This is how technology works. We started this project one year ago with IBM coming in, doing a Phase One consulting engagement. The city was looking for a wireless network. When we did our first analysis of the city needs, what we found was that the city needed far more than a wireless network. It needed a complete overhaul of its data infrastructure. We then approached the city about widening the expanse of what they'd like to do to encompass the upgrading, or we call the enterprise refurbishment of your networking, of your application infrastructure, and the wireless network itself. In Phase Two, which we just completed, we've done a large study of your wireless needs. We also did a study of your application needs and the infrastructure needs of the city in terms of servers, disaster recovery sites, those types of items. The Phase Three that we have now engaged on and begun will encompass selecting one of your enterprise application partners that we're currently reviewing. It will also encompass building the infrastructure that we're discussing in terms of servers, and then the item that's on the agenda tonight, the pervasive wireless network that we'd like to incorporate into the city. When we studied the options for wireless networks, we're basically addressing two different needs here. One of them is a need for the city's workers. We call this an intranet, basically a wireless intranet, for your codes people, police, fire, the PUB, those types of folks to have connectivity. The second need is a project that's not on this agenda tonight, which is a mesh network that will operate in the parks. That is a Wi-Fi network for citizens' access to the Internet and those types of things. What we're addressing tonight is the city's licensed wireless. The network that I was hopefully going to be able to show you tonight, but I can give you a description of it, is a three-tower network, as we saw on the write-up. We're establishing three towers in the city. One will be on PUB property next to the electrical plant out west of town, right up against the river. The second site will be south of the sewer plant on East Avenue, again, out by the river, and Commissioner Longoria has approved this site since it's a nice shot of his house. So we made sure that he understood exactly where this tower's going and what the arrangements would be.
It's going to be on the property where we have the wastewater?
It is on the property right in front of the detention pond. You have a detention pond, and then there's a little, probably about a 20, 25 acre spot there. We're going to use 6.1 acres of that spot. And the third tower is going to be on the Carrier's current tower that he owns in Olmito. We don't have to build anything. We don't have to do anything. He's giving us a five-year lease for the antenna space that we require, ah, here we go, for $1. So-
What happens at the end of those five years, Paul?
That's a concern.
I'm sorry?
What happens at the end of those five years?
Is there some kind of a renewal or adoption?
Yes. The three agreements that we're addressing tonight, and if you could flip over to the next screen here, we'll show you the design real quick here. Dandy pointer. This is the PUB tower, the new PUB tower that will be on the PUB land. The tower company is responsible for doing a hazmat study on both these properties, the PUB property and Cobb's property. The tower company will do a Phase One, and if it's necessary, a Phase Two hazmat study to ensure that there are no hazardous materials on these sites. Obviously, that's a big liability issue for the city and for the tower owner. Once that's completed, they will begin construction of the towers at both locations. This third tower up here is the existing tower that the Carrier will give us space for. These towers, the agreement that the PUB has passed the other night, they passed the exact same agreement that you're reading tonight, for a 40-year lease for this tower land, the Carrier, or excuse me, the tower company is responsible for the building and maintenance of that tower. In exchange, what the city gets is antenna space on both these towers. We get 12 spaces between these two towers to be shared by PUB and by the city.
Is that enough space for the long-term, for expansion and?
It's enough space in terms of what we need immediately, and between us and the PUB in terms of value, that space is worth about $100,000. The total value that we're getting between these two things is about $125,000 with a value that we're going to get between the disaster recovery space and the antenna space. Obviously, these towers are about $350,000. That's what it costs them to build these. These buildings for commercial purposes. There were a number of spaces we could get. I couldn't squeeze the turnip too far, but we got six spaces on each tower, which we think is sufficient for the current needs and some expansion. It's unpredictable what the expansion could be, but we think we've got enough to suit the PUB and Cobb's needs for the current-
I would hope that you could just try to address it in some form or fashion so that when it does come up in the future, we're not left at the pure women discretion of the provider. This is a win-win for both, but we don't want to be where we're stuck, and we need more room because of emergency needs or whatever the case might be.
Yeah, the, well, Mr. Mayor, the spaces that we have on here right now, we have six spaces on this tower. We have six spaces on this tower, and we're sharing those between the city and the PUB, and we can address, in a separate agreement, some kind of reduced rate for the city to get some more space, but this is a, we would be at the retail rates at that point. Our needs assessment of what you currently have is showed that six spaces should be sufficient for what we need to do to get the infrastructure going at this point.
We plan on having the city continue to grow it quite a clip, Mr. Paul.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I would expect that this is just the start of the tower growth in the city. The, I think the big thing for us here is the spaces that we're getting at the base of these towers. There's 225 square feet of disaster recovery space allocated to the city and the PUB at the base of those towers to be shared between those entities. That is generator-backed up in a concrete hardened facility. There isn't a city that we've found in the Rio Grande Valley that has that kind of disaster recovery space currently. Nobody has this kind of space. So we think this is a huge gain for the city because currently, you're completely vulnerable in terms of any type of disaster right now. If the data center was taken out, you don't have a backup facility. So we think this is a huge step forward. It's going to, we're going to sleep a lot better at night once this is up and we've got these disaster recoveries in place. recoveries in place. Okay, can go to the next slide.
Sir, you still didn't answer the question about the north tower after the five years?
Oh, yeah, back up one more slide. These contracts are 40-year leases for land and the tower space. This contract on the existing tower is tied directly to the service agreement. You have three items that we're approving tonight. One is the tower agreement for 40-year lease of this land in exchange for antenna space and the disaster recovery space. The second item is the lease for five years with a five-year right to renew for this tower space here, and that is tied to the third item, which is the services contract to operate all this. As long as the carrier is the services carrier to operate this network, then this space will be necessary. If Rioplex, for whatever reason, loses the contract after five years, we would no longer require this space on this tower for our needs to operate this network.
But if we wanted to continue?
You have the option to renew for another five years.
Okay.
Correct. As long as the carrier is the carrier of choice to operate your intranet, your licensed intranet, that space will continue to be available.
Whether it's the same company, or a subsequent company, or successor company?
Correct.
This contract would address that. In the event that they sell to somebody else, we need to make sure that, okay?
Correct, we put that language in the contract to ensure, on both this and the services agreement, that continuance would occur, because obviously, in these kind of days, that happens a lot. These are the coverage areas that we're looking at. This is a YMAX network. YMAX networks are defined by wide coverage areas, and we're covering the entire city with five cells. We're concentrating, obviously, the coverage within the primary city limits, and the Olmito Tower is our growth tower. So over five years, we are expecting that we will see growth to the north, we'll be able to start providing services to the north also. This is a high survivability network. The licensed frequencies that we have here are going to provide you interference protection that would be opposed, or, excuse me, as opposed to an unlicensed network, like a Wi-Fi network, where you really have no control over the frequency users or who's going to use the carriers. Okay. So these are the next steps that we're recommending, that we execute the wireless contracts. Then the tower company will then file for FAA and EPA approvals of the tower land. The tower company pays for that, that's the first milestone. At the end of Milestone 1, they will be paid $15,000. At the end of Milestone 2, which is your FCC approvals for this site and the frequencies, prior to the beginning of tower construction, the tower company will be paid $85,000 to begin the construction. And then this custom network build-out begins of the design that we handed the carrier. When they have completed all the performance and acceptance testing, which we are going to supervise, IBM is going to supervise this, they'll then be paid their final payment. And then we will begin a ramp-up, a six-month activation, to get our base of 260 users, that's going to be our start for the city. And then the expand, the users can be expanded over five to 10 years as the needs arise. And then we hope in 2007 that we're going to begin testing some new YMAX devices. YMAX is a very interesting technology. We think this is where the carriers are going, and I think Brownsville is going to find themselves in a very interesting position in about eight months from now in terms of their economic profile as a city of advanced technology.
We were far behind, and with this, hopefully, we'll be?
You're going to be ahead.
Way far ahead.
Way far ahead. To hear. We're setting the mark. Are any other questions?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Longoria motion to approve, seconded by Commissioners Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Paul, good luck, keep it up. Item 22.
Item 22. Consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one armored special weapons and tactics vehicle for the Brownsville Police Department SWAT team.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, at the request of our Police Chief Carlos Garcia, the Purchasing Department has solicited proposals from Lenco Industries for the purchase of one Lenco Bearcat, a four-wheel-drive Ford F-550 frame diesel engine armored vehicle. I think we have a photo somewhere, Robert.
A sharp-looking vehicle.
The Brownsville Police Department has worked together with Lenco Industries to select appropriate equipment based on the department needs. Lenco is the GSA awarded contractor for armored SWAT vehicles, special response vehicle, light armored vehicle, and bomb response vehicle. The GSA quotation is attached for your consideration in action. Our recommendation is that you award this contract for the armored SWAT vehicle for the Brownsville Police Department to Lenco Industries of Pitts Field, Massachusetts, in the amount of $191,113. This is GSA contract pricing, and the funding is in place at the Police Department. $125,000 of this, is important to note, will be coming through Homeland Security Grants.
So move to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Commissioners Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo.
It's black, but it's going to have some orange flame.
Is this a six-cylinder?
We don't want them to know we're coming.
All approve.
They're going to paint it a funky color or anything.
Aye, and all opposed, motion carries. We have one public comment, Ms. Maria Mandiola. Is Ms. Mandiola in? She's still, okay. Alright, well, that being the case, this meeting is adjourned. Ms. Ramos, if you'd please read the call, this meeting is called to order.
Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, workshop, and regular meeting on Tuesday, June 20, 2006, at 4:40 PM, 5:30 PM, and 6 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building.
Executive session, motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. Go in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, will be an executive session.
Honorable Commissioner, last year, the City of Brownsville embarked with, in partnership with the Texas Water Development Board, to initiate a flood protection mitigation plan study. That study is now complete, it was funded with City B.G. Funds and Texas Water Development Board funding, the total about $100,000 plus. Tonight, we have the final plan for your adoption, it's item number 13, but before that, we would like to have a quick workshop, and our consultant, the Ambiotech Engineering, Mr. Carlos Marine, would like to go over that plan study with you. And again, and item number 13 would be the official adoption of that plan.
Mayor members of the commission, I'm Carlos Marine, I'm with Ambiotech, and joining me today are Ann Whitco, Staff Hydrologist, and Dr. Jude Benavides, who is an Associate Senior Engineer and also on the faculty with UT Brownsville. As Ben said, there will be two items later tonight. One of them will be to adopt this plan that has already been completed, funded by the Water Development Board, and the point of adopting this plan is that it will make us eligible for FEMA funding, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. The other item is to expand the scope of this project to encompass a bigger area, and this map, can you bring it to the second slide, please? Is that the second? Yeah, there, excellent. This is an aerial showing the Brownsville ETJ in red around the outside area. The Rio Grande is on the left, all the red areas are Brownsville ETJ, the blue, the purple, actually, the old study area, which is what this study that's been completed actually encompasses. The yellow area is Brownsville city limits, and as you can see, that the Phase 1 or our old study area, ah, thank you very much, only encompassed a small percentage of the entire ETJ and a small percentage of the actual city limits. And again, this is the entire ETJ. This is a report that I'm going to present today, and the recommendations and the CIP associated with that plan. The Phase 2 of which you'll also be considering today is to expand this study area to the blue area. And as you know, this whole area is rapidly growing. The old study went to about south of Alton Glor, around the Brownsville Country Club, and I'll get into more details of what was covered there, but the second phase of this study is to encompass a larger area, which is one of the most rapidly growing areas in Brownsville. Next slide, please. The logic was to first determine topographic data. Topographic data in the old days was very expensive to obtain, now we're talking about LiDAR, laser, laser derived data. The next thing was to develop what are called hydrology, hydrologic and hydraulic models. And the point of that is that you can simulate what's going to happen to the water sheds when you drop a given rainfall on the system. Then we evaluate alternatives in terms of using benefits and costs, develop the CIP, and then conduct the public hearings. Next slide, please. This is a representation of the LiDAR information, the topography in the study area. The project study included Town Rosaca, North Main Drain, Rosaca de la Guerra, and CCD Number 1, or Cameron County Drain District Number 1, this is by this line road, expressway, the river is somewhere out here. And basically, the darker the color, the higher the elevations. The lighter the color, the lower the elevations. So you'll see a general pattern of drainage going from the higher elevations in the river, going from west to east. And you can also identify problem areas, Highway 48, 802, the airport area, and of course, northeast Brownsville past Rosaca de Rancho Viejo. Next slide, please. Problem with drainage in the area, everybody's familiar with it, flat topography. Yes, we're in drought, in fact, the entire state's in a drought right now, and we average only about 26 inches of rainfall per year, but the problem down here is we can get 10, 12 inches in a couple of hours. And we've seen that in Houston, I think yesterday, they're in a drought as well, and it got, I think, eight inches in a very small timeframe.
They may not believe you today, but, you know.
That's right. Poorly drained soils, we all know what the growth and development, what that causes for the runoff to grow, to go past and peak a lot faster. One of the other problems I want to address, and we'll talk about this later on, is multiple jurisdictions. Even within the small area that we talked about, there are a number of different jurisdictions that govern drainage and make drainage policy. As a result, sometimes we're not always going in the same direction. Accountability and control are not always in the same place. As a result, sometimes things don't get done well. And the other issue, next slide, please, that I want to discuss is primary versus secondary flooding. Our project only focused on primary flooding, and that is when the major drain overflows, and as a result, the waters, houses that are not necessarily close to the drain but are tied in hydraulically will flood if they're in a lower elevation. And we see that a lot in Brownsville. That's a major source of flooding, flooding, and the more serious type of flooding. There's also secondary flooding where the connection from the neighborhood to the main drain is of insufficient capacity, that even if the drainage itself, the drainage ditch itself is at low levels, not flooded, they'll be flooding because the water can't get to the drain. We're more concerned with this, and our study focused on this. This is not, this is a secondary problem. Fixing this problem before you fix this problem is like rearranging the chairs on the Titanic, it's fruitless. Next slide, please. This is a prediction using the hydrologic and hydraulic models of what the existing conditions, flooding, existing flooding conditions are in the area of the study. Again, this is Town Rosaca, this is North Main Drain, Rosaca de la Guerra, and the biggest watershed in the study area, Cameron County Drain District Number 1. The blue areas are indicative of flooding, the darker the color, the more serious the flooding. And immediately what stands out is Four Corners area, southmost area, airport, and the biggest problem, here Brownsville Country Club in this area, and the biggest problem is Highway 48, 802, that's a very serious and very low spot. Next slide. This is a prediction of what happens when you have full development in that area, and with runoff controls. And I point that out because particularly CCD Number 1 has done a great job of maintaining their ditches and implementing runoff controls on new development. The point is that even with runoff controls, we're still going to see a significant amount of flooding, and that flooding is going to be worse as we move forward into the future and development increases. CCD Number 1, flood depths about six feet, 24% increase in flooded areas. Rosaca de la Guerra, 13% increase in flooded areas, North Main Drain, 25%, et cetera. Next slide. The proposed recommendations involve both nonstructural and structural controls. The nonstructural controls are to revamp the jurisdictional organizations that govern drainage in the area. Instead of having a loose network of sometimes competing jurisdictions, we're proposing a single drainage entity, and that will focus control and responsibility and accountability in a single point. The next one is to implement development controls. CCD Number 1 has already started that, the city has ordinances that allow it to at least look into it. So it basically, runoff from the site must be less than or equal what you see without development, and secondly, that you need to consider downstream impacts. Typically, when we look at drainage, we only concern, we're only concerned about how fast we get the water off and are the pipes big enough? But that's self-defeating, because somewhere down the road, you're going to have to control that water. And once the water gets into the drainage ditch, it's very expensive to control. Property buyouts, there are some areas that are not worth trying to implement structural or nonstructural controls, they're not going to fix them, and it's too expensive, and we'll just buy those out. And of course, structural controls. And the main focus here is on detention ponds, and I want to stress that detention ponds, it can be multiple benefit ponds, it can service parks, recreational areas at the same time, channel modifications, and the typical type of hydrologic improvements. Next slide. This is a schematic showing the proposed plan for CCD Number 1, and basically, it involves a number of detention areas. And they range from 50 acres to 100 acres. Total storage area would be about 4,200 acre feet, plus hydraulic ditch improvements. Next slide. Proposed plan for North Main Drain, again, the same thing, detention ponds, and increasing detention area near the airport. Next one. Town Rosaca, dredging of Rosaca, some property buyouts, and some lining of ditches. Next slide. This is the result of implementing the plan for CCD Number 1. This is for a 100-year event, and you can see that the dark areas have become much lighter. We removed approximately 4,800 structures from the floodplain. The net present value of total costs, which are capital and operation and maintenance over 20-year horizon, about $34 million. The benefits, which are derived as a result of reduced flood benefits, are, you know, over $500 million. Net benefits, $600 million. Reduction in floodplain areas, about 50%, and so on. Next slide. Implementing the North Main Drain, again, we remove approximately 1,000 homes from the floodplain, that net benefits is $60 million. Next slide. Town Rosaca, again, net benefits are approximately $100 million in reduced benefits. Next slide. How much does this cost? Well, what we've done is tried to stretch out the capital and O&amp;M costs, in this case it's just the capital costs, over 20 years, and it breaks down to about, an average of about $7 million a year over the next 20 years. The majority of the expenses would be in CCD Number 1, it's the largest drainage district. Town Rosaca, about $10 million. North Main Drain, about $33 million. But again, it averages to about 7... But again, it averages to about $7 million over the next 20 years, which is compatible, comparable to the amount of improvements we're talking about for our street improvements. Next slide. How do we finance that infrastructure? Well, there are a number of alternative ways to finance that infrastructure. Impact fees, certificates of obligation, bonds, tariffs. There's ways to share some of the money that's been already allocated for streets to do for drainage. But of course, there are competing priorities. We've got a very small pot of money. Where should it go? And are we better off spending money on drainage versus downtown redevelopment? Drainage versus parks? In some cases, we could combine the functions of drainage and parks. But the question ultimately is, are we better off from an economic development point of view and fairness? And really, those questions really need to be addressed within the comprehensive master plan we've been talking about implementing. Next slide. Next slide. In the case of drainage, however, as opposed to streets, where funding is fairly limited and getting even more limited for larger projects, is that FEMA has now changed their policy recently. In the past, FEMA would only fund buyouts. Now FEMA is going to make money available for actual construction if you have a master plan or a drainage plan, and if you're eligible. And the project grants are being administered through the Water Development Board. In our last public hearing, we spoke to the Water Development Board, and they're very interested in funding projects down here. And if we adopt this plan today for Phase 1, some of these projects will be eligible for funding with a 75%, 25% match. And that's fairly recent. Most of the money right now is going to East Texas, and they'd like to see some of that money down here. To be approved, we must adopt the plan by the city and then approve it by FEMA, and there'll be an application that needs to be prepared. But our discussions are that it will be ranked highly. Next slide, please. Now, in the short run, we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking about potentially waiting for master plan or some other vehicle for determining what is the appropriate way to finance that infrastructure. And these are the same questions we'll be looking at in terms of financing water and wastewater improvements, streets, and other improvements. We're really facing, because of our growth, a tremendous challenge in terms of financing our infrastructure, and that question needs to be addressed in a very thorough and organized way. In the meantime, what do we do? Well, I think the most important thing we need to do is implement jurisdictional organizational restructuring. Literally, we're in a hole, and the first law of being, finding yourself after you dug yourself into a hole is you stop digging. And one of the things I would recommend immediately is to step up our enforcement and implementation of ordinances in terms of the plating process. So that plating now has to incorporate what downstream impacts will be. And of course, creating a single organizational agency. Next phase, which is, well, the second item we'll be looking at, is to expand the models and the scope of the project to include the areas that are growing, and then implement Phase 1 of the Years 1 and 2 CIP. Next slide. Here's Years 1 and 2, drainage reports, again, the plating for review so that the downstream impacts are considered, organizational restructuring. I think in terms of organizational restructuring, there are several options. Start from scratch or take CCD Number 1 and simply expand its scope. And talking to Jim Goza, that will require an election in May, but that's something we have some time to start working on. The next one will be the Plan Design and Construct Detention Pond Near Owens Road, Four Corners, about $2 million. Our conversations with Water Development Board indicate that this project would be eligible for the funding under FEMA if this plan is adopted today. Plan and Design and Construct Brownsville Country Club Detention Pond. This could be done in conjunction with the Morrison Road improvements. Drainage is going to be a big part of that. And I know the city is currently talking about deepening the ponds at the Brownsville Country Club, and considering that together with the Morrison Road drainage, we'll be able to come up with some money to do that. And of course, Town North, which is one of the worst areas on Route 10, 802, that project is already underway. Next slide. That's basically my presentation. If you have any questions, appreciate it. Thank you.
No questions? Do you have any questions? Any questions?
Fine. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm sorry for being late. I was just trying to, Dr. Marine.
Yes, sir.
This is just an observation, but what is the state's, is the state willing to help in any way? And what, the reason I'm telling you this is because as a citizen of Brownsville, we never flooded on Old PI and Boca Chica. We didn't flood that much in the Minnesota area, 802, out by the old hospital. When the state fixed our roads and went down about a foot and a half and reconstructed our roads, we started flooding. We started seeing people with water in their houses, things that did not happen before they went down instead of up on the roads. Is there anything that the state can do to help us within this as part of your plan?
Well, it's not a unique situation. When TechDOT designs a road, that it sometimes causes some secondary drainage problems. I mean, the area you're talking about is susceptible to flooding, as you saw in my drawing. But there is no question that that has contributed to drainage problems in that area. Same thing happened with the widening of 802 in Garden Park area. And I know we've designed a project to handle that, it's starting, and Ben has been able to get some concessions from the state, and they'll provide some funding because they admitted that they had a problem. It's a matter of simply approaching the state and trying to address that issue, and they will contribute, they'll come to the table. But of course, there is, and in some other places, there's been some very aggressive lawsuits filed against TechDOT for drainage problems. The question is maintain that relationship with TechDOT so that some of that funding for roads.
Very simple example I could give you as part of that was when the state reached the agreement with the city that they would send the runoff from the Expressway to the drainage ditch at the Brownsville Country Club. You know, where did that brainchild come from? You know, we all know that the Brownsville Country Club is one of our first areas to flood, yet you're sending the Expressway runoff into the Brownsville Country Club ditches.
Exactly. And the position in the past has been to not necessarily oppose them, and now you have some basis now, a technical basis, because you really couldn't predict. And that's the advantage of these models. They're probably the most, the highest state of art in terms of being able to predict what the impacts would be. As opposed to before, you have some back-of-the-envelope calculations. Now you can show it in a fairly substantial way and technically defensible way that it's going to have an impact. So that's one advantage. And to sit down with TechDOT before the projects are designed so that you minimize the impacts. So yes, on both counts. It makes sense to work with them, and in fact, in Morrison Road, we've made it clear that drainage is going to be a major problem, and the typical solution of simply creating a big enough pipe to send the water off is not going to solve the problem.
Thank you, sir. We'll have a short three-minute break, so you can stretch your legs.
A lot of talk and no answer.
And he hasn't lost any of his humor.
Good to see you, sir.
Why don't you talk to him about it?
Yeah, I went to sit in the chair, and I saw him there.
Oh, glad you stood.
Huh?
Glad you stood.
Yeah.
They're not here either? Do we have names in there?
Yes, they're right here. One of them, Erica. They added another one, should be Shelley.
You have that over there with the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask her? I don't think she will.
Yeah, he was, see, he was getting up on his legs when he found the hand.
Which is that guy? I don't know him.
I swear he couldn't fall up on his legs.
I'm barely hanging over there.
Especially though, they didn't have as much claws as he did. But, I mean, I'm watching him walk, and he's having some difficulty. You want me to do it?
Yeah.
It's because if they got me with Al, I don't remember if I did. I don't think I did.
I don't know.
I thought, I thought it was you did. I thought, I thought, no, I thought Ernie did. I thought Ernie did, and he seconded it.
I don't know. I need to check.
It's not a majority. That's what I'm saying.
The other one has to work with him.
Yeah. That's the reason that I'm.
You should do it.
You go ahead and do it.
Do it quick.
Good. As soon as he reads it, and he just say mayor, and regardless of who says it, I'm going to go to you.
What is?
Yeah. Yeah. Attorney, former United States magistrate. Oh, he is here. Oh, he is here. Good, okay. The eighth grader, the spelling.
I'm afraid nobody called.
Are they here right now? Thank you, Scotty. It'll be a problem. We'll talk about it in a while. We're there.
Former United States magistrate.
I knew you were going to do that, man. Like, I knew, I knew, I knew that fireworks season was going to come in. And I told him, I said, no way, gee, no way, I'm sorry.
Nadarshan.
Nadarshan.
Can and disapp.
Has he heard that or not?
Oh, the tennis teams are here.
There will be, yes.
Good.
He's cool, man. I'm telling you, my phone, I wanted him. The only question I have is the process. You know what I mean?
If you call me tomorrow, I can give her his phone number, and then she could talk to him. Yeah, but what she tells, he tells, yeah. I go, because it might be long. Let me make a copy.
One of my issues that I had talked to Mr. Rose. Decide to put their parking different, I think it's going to cause a lot of problems. Currently, right now, they're parking to the apartment.
Is this the V R Forum?
No, no, that's the, that's the, the one on Boca Chica in Central.
If I could get the commissioners back, please.
She wants to talk about her, an email you sent him.
Okay.
Contact him or something. I'll find out tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. I know we're missing two. Are they out there?
Oh, they're here.
Are they indisposed? All right. We'll give them a minute.
I know it. What draft is yours? What draft?
Let me ask the following special citizens to please step forward to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Erika Coronado, fifth grader from El Jardín Elementary, proud child of Blanca Coronado. Brendan Lee Sanchez, third grader from Rosa del Castillo Elementary. Proud parent, Eva Sanchez. And Shelley Fernandez, also from El Jardín Elementary. Is Shelley here? If I could ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one and indivisible.
What a voice.
Let's give a big round of applause. I'd like to ask our city chaplain, how about that, Bob, to please step forward for our invocation this evening.
And I would like for all of us to have a moment of silence for our Brownsville boy, Mancheca, and his family, and all the families of all those that have gone before him in this terrible war. And at the same time, pray for all of our servicemen and women around the globe. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, thanking you in advance for the rains that will hit part of, I hope, all of Brownsville. We need the rain for our beautiful green lawns, for our resacas, for just clean air. And Lord, we ask you to give wisdom to our mayor, to our city manager, to all the heads of the departments, to the commissioners, as they proceed this evening with a heavy agenda. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance and direction, not only in all of our lives, but for the city of Brownsville. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. You may be seated. We have several proclamations this evening. I venture to guess that's why we have such a full crowd, because everybody's here on a good note. First presentation's going to be to the junior tennis champ, but Commissioner Sisnadas is going to do that presentation, so we're going to go to the next one. And I'd like to ask, well, the best speller, as far as I'm concerned in this entire country, Nadarshan Anna Decevum, to please step forward along with his parents. For those of you who may not have read the paper or been watching television a few weeks ago, we had the honor of having this young man on national television, representing not only himself and his family, but his school and his community in all of South Texas at the Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee. We have a proclamation because it's not every day, first of all, that we have such a eloquent and educated and learned young man in our commission, but somebody who's brought so much honor and prestige to our community. At the ripe old age of 13, right? 14? 13. A proclamation of the City Commissioner of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Nadarshan Anna Decevum for his placement in the top 10 in the 2006 Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee. Whereas Nadarshan Anna Decevum is a 13-year-old eighth-grade student in Brownsville St. Joseph Academy. And whereas for the past four years, Nadarshan has completed, has competed, see, I can't even spell that, has competed in the Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, finishing 85th, 47th, 37th, before finishing in eighth place out of 275 contestants in this year's competition in Washington, DC. Whereas a native of New York, Nadarshan, the son of proud parents, Logga and Subara, Anna Decevum, lived in Sri Lanka before coming to Brownsville. And whereas Nadarshan, who received a certificate and cash award on his eighth-place finish, has brought honor to his city, his school, and his family, has set an example for future generations of students to follow, and for this, we are proud to have him in our city. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commissioner of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby recognize and congratulate Nadarshan Anna Decevum on his outstanding achievement in finishing in eighth place out of 275 competitors in the 2006 Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, and further wish him well in his future pursuits of lexicon excellence. Done on this 20th day of June, signed by the mayor and the city commissioners. Nadarshan, you've done us proud. Congratulations, son.
Congratulations.
on his outstanding achievement in finishing in eighth place out of two-hundred-and-seventy-five competitors in the 2006 Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, and further wish him well in his future pursuits of lexicon excellence. Done on this twentieth day of June, signed by the mayor and the city commissioners. Nadarshan, you've done us proud. Congratulations, son.
Congratulations.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come here and share my experience at the National Spelling Bee. I am extremely honored and proud to have represented the Valley in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I'd like to thank my friends, teachers, well-wishers, and all those who have supported me during the Spelling Bee. I couldn't have done it without your support. I'd also like to thank my sponsor, Valley Food Newspapers, because without them, none of this could have been able to happen. Most of all, I'd like to thank my parents and my family, because without their time and effort in helping me, there's no way I could have done as well as, as well as I did. Now, I'm gonna tell you about my experiences with the National Spelling Bee. First, to get there, I had to win the class, school, banza and regional spelling bees. These prepared me for the National Spelling Bee. After winning the regional one, I made an effort to persevere and study hard, even during the late nights, to learn new spelling words, their meanings and origins. I knew that to do well, it would take an extraordinary effort. But I'm glad to say that I kept studying and persevered through mental fatigue. My advice to future spellers would be to never quit, even when things aren't looking too good. Because in the long run, trust me, it's all worth it. Overall, I learned many new words, built up my vocabulary and found out some interesting roots for foreign words. But the most important thing that I developed was my study habit. I might use the knowledge that I gain quite frequently, but I'll use my study habits throughout the rest of my life. And I'd like to end with a famous quote. Education is not the filling of a pail, but it's the lighting of a fire. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm sure I speak for everybody in Brownsville, Nadarshan, when I say that you've done us so, so very proud and you set the bar high. I hope many of the kids that are here this evening, that are watching and will be reading about this, realize that you have set quite an example that I hope many of them will follow. Good luck to you and all your future endeavors, and I got a feeling this won't be the last time we hear about your exploits. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. At this time, I'd like to ask another talented group of children, the junior tennis champs, to please step forward for some recognition. Go ahead and face the camera.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing members of Brownsville Junior Team Tennis who are advancing to national finals play. Whereas junior team tennis is one of the fastest-growing sports and category in Brownsville and throughout Texas. And whereas local junior players compete at the Brownsville Tennis Center in three different levels. Beginners ages six through nine, intermediate ages nine through fourteen, and advanced, advanced ages fifteen through eighteen, including three intermediate and five advanced teams competing in the Texas Sectionals Tournament, May nineteenth through the twenty-first in New Braunfels, Texas. And whereas intermediate team of local players, ten to fourteen years of age, won the championship in New Braunfels and will represent the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Tennis Center in the National Tournament, October twentieth through the twenty-second, two thousand and six, in Tucson, Arizona. And where, Tucson, Arizona. And whereas Team High Rollers has seven players advancing to national competition, including Bernardo Vallejo, Memo Rico, Raúl Garza, Ariana Castillo, María Fernanda Cárdenas, Sofia Montemayor, Noemi Reyes Baldazo, coached by Raúl Garza, with Cassie Gudell serving as junior team commissioner for Brownsville. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize members of the High Rollers Brownsville Junior Team Tennis Squad, who will represent our city at Tucson, Arizona, in the National Tournament, October twentieth through the twenty-second, two thousand and six, and further wish them success in the upcoming competition. Done on this, on this, the twentieth day of June, two thousand and six, signed by our mayor, Eddie Trevino Jr., and this Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations, guys. Memo, your team captain.
Well, first I'd like to start off by thanking all the players of our team that have competed in, in New Brownsville and have just won. I'd like to thank them, 'cause without them, we wouldn't be here. Um, I'd like to thank all our parents for supporting us with what we need, all those rackets that we've thrown and everything. They always support us with the money to get another one and classes and everything. I'd also like to thank, um, well, everyone here that has come to support us and watched, and seen us, um, seen us, well, here, I guess.
And we'll be waiting when you come back with the championship.
Yes. And I hope we win over there.
We wish you the best of luck. We will.
See you in Tucson.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Al Centeno to please step forward. For those of you who had the honor and privilege of attending our dedication ceremony at Veterans Park on May the twenty-ninth, many, many people put a lot of hard work and effort into seeing the park actually come to fruition. But Mrs. Centeno helped coordinate that beautiful dedication ceremony, and I'd like to recognize his efforts. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and thanking Al Centeno for his efforts in opening, helping opening Veterans Park. Whereas Al Centeno is a native of Brownsville, graduated from Brownsville High School in nineteen sixty-nine, and has been married to Eliakantu for forty-five years, and has married three, and has three children, a boy and two girls. And whereas Al Centeno has long been known and appreciated for his community volunteerism, including our city's bicentennial observance, the Mr. Migo Organization, the co-founding of the annual Taste de la Frontera event, coordinating the record-breaking visit to our city in nineteen eighty-five by President Ronald Reagan, and his work to bring the two-party system to Cameron County. And whereas Al Centeno has been a loyal and dedicated member of the Knights of Columbus for the past thirty years. And whereas Al Centeno accepted the responsibility of coordinating the grand opening of Brownsville Veteran Park on May the twenty-ninth, two thousand and six, and through his work and organizational skills, was a major force in making the event the success that it was. And whereas Brownsville is fortunate to have a citizen such as Al Centeno, and it is important that he be recognized for his good works and dedication to the city of Brownsville. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank Al Centeno for his lifelong service to our community, and most recently, his skillful coordination of the grand opening of Veterans Park in our city. Done on this twentieth day of June, two thousand and six, Al, thank you for everything you've done for our community.
Congratulations, Al.
And before you say a few words, I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Cowan from Senator Eddie Lucio's office to please step forward to also make another presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On behalf of State Senator Eddie Lucio, who couldn't be here today, I would like to present this special flag that was flown on Memorial Day for an awesome citizen of the state of Texas, okay? I know he's an awesome citizen of the city of Brownsville and Cameron County, but you are really a great citizen of the state of Texas. So on behalf of Senator Eddie Lucio, I'd like to present this flag that was flown on Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and six, to you.
All right.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Commissioners, and citizens of Brownsville, this is just as much token that I have done for the city of Brownsville, besides serving my country, and making this place a much better than what I found it when I got here and I was born, and I'm racing on this city, and I still think this is the best city throughout the world, as I travel myself to other cities. I think we have a good chance to really grow up and grow and grow and grow till we meet something like San Antonio or something. We have, as long as we keep leadership like the one we have now, I'm sure we will accomplish this dream. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Al. All right. Our next proclamation, I'd like to ask Mr. B. Wadwani, just please step forward. Commissioner Atkinson?
Thanks.
Come on, go down there.
Yes, of course, she can step forward.
My first proclamation, I just wanted to do it down here. I think it'll be the last one. I wanted to just recognize a man who has done so much for Brownsville. And, um, I'll be here. It's a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing B. Wadwani. For his many continued contributions to the city. Whereas Wadwani, a native of India, now a part of Pakistan, was rich, reared in Indonesia, educated in Singapore, and came to Brownsville in nineteen seventy-six to open his first business in our city called the Indian Peak. Whereas Wadwani, twenty-five years ago, married his wife, Kita. And what he says is a great example of an arranged marriage, of course. And now, married to two children, two boys and one girl. And whereas Wadwani was quick to recognize the potential of American dream and set his heart to realize that dream, and has now become one of the largest property owners in our city and in South Texas, building and operating hotels throughout the valley, volunteering in civic and charitable organizations. And whereas Wadwani has involved himself with Rotary International, co-founded the Local Hotel, Hotel Association, is a member of the appraisal history, is an avid supporter of local sports and sports enthusiasts, and, and, and I quote, because I like to help build Brownsville. He came to help the Veterans Park open the hosting of VIP reception afterwards. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank B. Wadwani, Wadwani, for the help he has given to our community on the past thirty years, and to let it be known that he is living proof that the American, American dream exists and that it is there for those willing to work for it. On this day, the twentieth, June, two thousand and six, signed by the mayor, Eddie Trevino Jr., and the rest of the commissioners.
If your wife gives you permission, you can say a few words, Wadwani.
Respect Mayor, respect Commissioners. You know, I've been here thirty years in Brownsville. And what I've seen ups and downs of Brownsville all the time, you know. When my first children came to Brownsville from Dallas, they hated it. I mean, they really hated it. They want to go back. They told me, "Pap, I want to go back to Dallas." But eventually, they stayed over here for a long period of time. Now they loved it. Now I tell them, "Go back," they don't want to go back, you know. You can hate Brownsville, you can love Brownsville, but Brownsville is your home. I always treated Brownsville like my mother. I respect Brownsville, and you know, Brownsville is my home. I give extra miles all the time to Brownsville to love Brownsville. Let me tell you something about China and India is growing very fast. Mr. Mayor, you know that. My brother-in-law came here last month over here from Hong Kong. He's been staying over there like fifty years in Hong Kong. He has a factory in Hong, in China, Bangladesh and Jordan. He supplies a lot of clothing to Jesse Penny and other companies over here. He told me, there's an American company who went to, in China, in a small town with a population of about ten thousand people. They talked to the mayor, because their laws were different. They couldn't fit in in that town, the American company. The mayor asked them to stay twenty-four hours. We'll see what we can do. They had a special meeting at eleven o'clock at night and talked to the commissioners. And then he came in the morning to the American business people, and the things were changed on that night and tell them everything is okay. Now you can come and stay. If they can do it, we can also do it, though. Look at the Sisnero. He was American, uh, he's a Mexican-American. How did he change it over there? We can also change it over here. There's no such thing as that we cannot do. You know, the failure and success is always a man's will. If you have a will, we can do it, though. There's nothing else, you know. I don't believe when they tell me, "No." My children are always at, "No, you have to try first." You cannot tell me, "No, you cannot do it." We can do it. I mean, if you have a unity and we have the guts, we can do it, anything we want, though, you know. And I'd like to thank you again, and it's a honor for me having this, like you. And wherever I'll be in this part of the world, India or China, Brownsville might be far away from my eyes, but will always be near to my heart. I thank you all.
Thank you, Wadwani. Commissioner Rojo, our next presentation is Mrs. Felipa M. Rodríguez.
Señora Rodríguez? Welcome. I must tell you in the audience that I owe Mrs. Rodríguez a thousand apologies. Because at the last commission meeting, somehow or other, I wrote an email reminding her about this important meeting that was going to be on the sixth, but I wrote that it was on the ninth. And she showed up with all of her family on the ninth. The commission meeting was on the sixth. Obviously, we weren't here. Thank you so much for coming, Mrs. Rodríguez. Yes. May I present? And now I'll read. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Mrs. Felipa M. Rodríguez. Whereas Felipa Rodríguez has dedicated fifty years of her professional life to public health and the provision of medical services. Whereas Felipa Rodríguez has responded to the needs of the City of Brownsville residents in a unique and outstanding way. And whereas Felipa Rodríguez has excelled in the sterile technique process, which has become a standard of care for public health in the city of Brownsville. Felipa M. Rodríguez has, with a smile, touched the lives at one time or another of many patients who have passed through the doors of the Brownsville Community Health Center. And whereas the Board of Directors, the staff of the Brownsville Community Health Center admire and appreciate the quality of work and Felipa's dedication to the service and to the patients of the clinic, the City of Brownsville is proud to have this exemplary role model in its city, providing quality care with dignity for over fifty years. Therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of this city, do hereby recognize and congratulate Mrs. Felipa M. Rodríguez. Mrs. Felipa M. Rodríguez on her 50 years of service and employment with the Brownsville Community Health Center, and further wish her many, many more years of service to this community. This was done on the 6th day of June, 2006, and it was signed by Mayor Eddie Trevino and all of the Commissioners. Felicitaciones, señora Rodríguez. Queremos otros 25 años mínimo.
Absolutely.
I want to, good evening to everyone.
It'll come down. There you go.
Good evening to everyone. And I would like to thank everyone involved in making this possible for me. This is a great honor, and I really, really, I feel very happy about it. I also want to thank my family for supporting me, even though I feel like Brownsville Community Health Center should get the award instead of me for allowing me to stay this long in their service. And also, as we know it, by the, by BCHC is a fine place to work and learn as you work and have fun doing what you like to do and what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodríguez.
Congratulations.
All right, our last presentation is to CDCB Youth Build. Commissioner Royo, who's here on behalf of CDCB Youth Build? There you go, come on up. For the camera.
This is the proclamation from the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, and we're recognizing students of CDCB's Youth Build of Brownsville, the Extreme Makeover. Whereas, the students of the Community Development Corporation's CDCB Youth Build Program, a comprehensive youth and community development program, whose students are encouraged to engage in the beautification and renovation of their community through interactive learning, were introduced to different environmental education tutorials on litter prevention, recycling, buying recycled products, and graffiti removal, and also organized and transformed a 10,000-square-foot lot into a community garden at Proyecto Digna in Cameron Park during the National Youth Service Day. And whereas, Youth Build students, working with community mentors, the city of Brownsville's Public Works and Recreation Division, and such organizations as Rotary Club, the Healthy Communities of Brownsville, the Brownsville Beautification Committee, and the Weed and Seed Organization, they picked up more than 17 tons of trash, community-wide. And whereas, the students of the Extreme Makeover Program have distinguished themselves as outstanding environmental stewards and leaders through their dedication to the community and environmental improvements by setting the example for every citizen to take responsibility for keeping our community beautiful and clean. Whereas, their efforts have earned them the 2006 Keep Texas Beautiful Ruth Jackson Leadership Award for off-campus youth groups. Now therefore, we, the members of this City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, we do hereby recognize each and every one of the students and participants of the Youth Build Extreme Makeover Program for their efforts in making Brownsville a cleaner, healthier, and more beautiful place to live. This was done on the 20th day of June, 2006, and it was signed by your mayor, Eddie Trevino, and city commissioners. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Y'all want to say a few words? Keep it up.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here tonight to represent Youth Build Brownsville. Youth Build has made many positive changes in my life as well as many classmates. They showed us how to be responsible and help out our community. For example, we helped up, we helped clean up the Sunrise Park, helped plant trees and flowers on Earth Day, and also helped set up different events throughout the community, like cancer relay, 5K mile run, and the turkey truck. We are also members of an organization, Americorps, that has helped out around the communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. All right, Commissioners, let's see if we can get through this agenda quickly. Item two, consent agenda.
Item two, consent agenda items A through H.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longotti, seconded by Commissioners Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item three, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Mayor?
Commissioner Nettles?
I'd like to appoint Brownsville City Attorney, and also he's a former US magistrate, Mr. Robert Guerra. I think he'd do a good job for the city of Brownsville and Brownsville PUB and all the citizens.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Nandis, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item four.
Item four, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2006-1100.37, an ordinance amending the city code by adding a new section entitled Prevention of Demolition by Neglect and dealing with related matters, including $2,000 penalties.
Mayor, City Commissioners, the reason we're here today is an ordinance for demolition by neglect or prevention of demolition by neglect. And in your packets, there were two versions. The first version, or version A, was what was adopted by the PNZ when we, and came forward to you as a recommendation from the PNZ. But in conversation with the National Trust, we came up with a version that was approved by the Heritage Council, and it's a different version from the PNZs. And the major differences are that the PNZs limited the enforcement to only sites, historic sites, and not non-contributing sites in the O-11. The version B covers every site in the O-11 overlay district. And the other one, the other difference is in the version A, you have a hardship provision, and in the version B, it removes that provision. So we're talking about maintenance of historic properties in an overlay district, not restoration of those sites. So we're talking about paint, we're talking about minor repairs, so that that particular building or structure is stabilized.
The, well, we tabled it back in February. Refresh our recollection. Why is that?
We tabled it for a rewrite. We actually spent quite a bit of time reviewing this with the National Trust. There are 2,000 other cities that have a very similar ordinance to this, and we felt that it should be more in line with those and that it fit Brownsville better.
Okay, because of the historical aspect, okay.
Correct. And the National Trust, we've run this by them, and they certainly endorsed version B. We've had not only conversations with their Southwest office, but their attorneys in Washington as well.
Did this have to go back to the PNZ?
We did not take it back to them because we brought you the recommendation that they, it's only a recommendation for PNZ, and that's what it was.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's no prerequisite that it has to go for a vote to the PNZ before it comes to the City Commission. All right. And I assume that the various groups of interest with regards to historical renovation in Brownsville are in support of your recommendation.
As noted, the Heritage Council especially strongly supports it. It comes to the point as to, do we want to preserve our community or do we not, so.
Any other questions? Hold on, Commissioner Royo?
That was it. I was going to move to close public hearing, and I was going to state that I sit on that board, and it's been discussed thoroughly, and we're all in favor of this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Royo, seconded by Commissioner Longotti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longotti, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Version B, though.
I'm sorry?
Version B.
That's your recommendation, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item five.
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-27 to rezone from dwelling A classification to general retail A classification, 1.069 acres out of block 86 of Los Ebonos Properties, near Rockwell Drive and Shidler Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the property shaded in red where the proposed zoning change is being recommended by the Plan Zoning Commission. This is Shalder, and you have Rockwell going here. The building's in place. It used to be an old pronto store, but they never had the proper zoning. They would like the proper zoning with this case. The Plan Zoning Commission were unanimous to approve this recommendation to you.
This is a public hearing.
So move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioners Nettles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Royo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-28 to rezone from apartment J classification to general retail J classification, lots one and two, and Boulevard lots 28, 30, and 32 of block BB of Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, near Boca Chica Boulevard and Central Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, City Commissioners, this is the Boca Chica, and you have Central Boulevard. If you know the area, this would be the Rancho Grande Apartments. The property is for sale. What we know at this time is that a Walgreens is being proposed on this corner. The applicant in this case would like to rezone the total site that, of the apartment complex for future expansion. The, there was one nay vote on the Plan Zoning Commission, one because of the proximity to the school. At this point...